The committee of the whole is back in order. Before we start, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to have, to ask for a moment of silence for legislative staff that we lost last night in Akashringi. Thank you. Mr. Speaker, you recognize?
Thank you very much. It occurs to me that although this might be slightly out of order before we leave revenues, since existing revenues incorporate a 1% increase in the gross receipts tax, and since I think it's no secret that I'm going to move to repeal the 1% gross receipts tax, I'd like to ask the indulgence of the chair to temporarily jump ahead so we can get to the language where the GRT is, so we can make the repeal and then make the amendment in revenues so that we don't wind up having a disconnect between the fino English and the numbers in here.
Oh, just, just, Mr. Speaker?
Point of information or?
No, no.
Point of order, no. Where is the part of?
I'm looking for it.
You will be, uh?
Well, it's not in, it's not in the--
Because what we adopted yesterday when you made the substitute version was just a chapter two to replace everything?
Right, so go back to the original bill. We only, we only substituted chapter two. I believe--
Well, you actually, in essence, substituted everything.
No, no, Speaker, we didn't. We just substituted that chapter.
So what are we working on, Mr. Speaker, on the--
Where, where is the language that affects the 1% gross receipts tax increase in the bill?
Is this it? Seventy-four, this one?
Can we, can we have a minute recess?
One minute recess. Mr. Speaker?
Okay, on the original bill, which I need to have a copy of, can I get a copy of the original bill now?
Speaker, yeah, I've got it here. I think you're talking about page thirty-one, section seven of the original bill, bill number seventy-four EC.
So section, section seven, let me, could I see a copy, please? Okay. Section seven of chapter, what chapter is that, Clerks? Chapter six? Okay. So my motion is to delete section seven of chapter six, which in the original bill is contained on page thirty-one. The effect of that motion would be to delete the increase in gross receipts tax rates and I want to be sure, well, it is a notwithstanding any other provisional law, the 4% gross receipt, so deletion of this will retain the 4% gross receipts tax. Is that your understanding, Art? I want to make sure that the construction of this particular section does not wind up repealing the entirety of gross receipts tax.
Right.
So--
Just the increase.
So the repeal of this section will only repeal the increase and you will continue to assess the 4% issue.
Yes.
All right.
That's a very legitimate question. Maybe what you can do is just on the language, the rate of the tax hereby imposed shall be 4%, period, so that it be abundantly clear that it does not remove the--
Well, I don't, I don't want to have a substitute version that confuses the original GRT law either. Maybe we can ask, I notice we have a legal counsel up there, sitting, looking very spiffy in his yellow shirt. My concern is simply that I want to make sure that by deleting this, I'm simply making sure that there is no 1% increase in gross receipts tax. I think that would be the effect of this, but I want to be certain that that is in fact the effect of this. Counsel? No, we need to get rid of it because we have to affect the revenues. But we gotta affect the revenues. In order to affect the revenues, we have to get rid of this. Okay, my, my assumption is that's the case. So my motion is to delete section seven.
Okay, so on the motion, so the motion, the motion is to delete, on chapter six, section seven, to delete the whole section, is that the, the motion, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, it is.
On the motion to delete section seven of chapter six, objections? Without objections, motion passes.
I also would move to delete section eight.
But, no, on, I just wanted a clarification now that he deleted that part. Does that have any change in terms of the projection at all?
Yes.
So that's to be read, okay.
I also wish to delete section eight.
Okay, on the motion to delete section eight of chapter six--
That would make sure that there's no increase in the use tax either, which is raised in section eight.
Any objections? Without objections, motion passes.
Going back now to revenues, having deleted those two sections, that will have an effect, presumably, on the, on the gross receipts tax estimate that you guys would like to see in here. And I was following the conversation yesterday somewhat, but, but I got a little bit confused because of the way that we determined that notwithstanding, that absent the gross receipts tax increase, the revenues would only be 159. And the reason why I'm a bit confused is we kind of just arbitrarily said it's twelve million. That's the effect. Is it twelve million? Is it another number? What could that number be?
Which, are you talking about the--
I'm talking about now that we've eliminated the increase in gross receipts tax, we need to eliminate what you anticipated receiving additionally from gross receipts tax, but that number has a certain arbitrary quality, so I'd like to kind of pick a number that we're comfortable with and say, you know, that, that, all right, remember yesterday you guys were talking about how, when you're doing these projections, you had a range, right?
Right.
Well, it occurs to me that the same logic must apply when you're looking at a potential increase in revenues due to the change in a tax, because the increase in revenues is a mathematical function of the estimate. So if the estimate is subject to a range, then by virtue of the, the functional mathematical relationship between the two numbers, the projected increase must also be a range. So could you tell me what the range is that you are looking at in terms of, had we allowed for the 1% increase in gross receipts tax, what would we probably have looking, been looking at, high and low? So we'll know how to adjust this number. Or to put it a different way, Art, could you give me a new revenue number now that we've not increased the gross receipts tax by 1%?
Do you want to talk about that percentage you were talking about?
Well, that was just a number that was pulled, so I actually want to know--
Mr. Speaker, are you talking specifically about GRT or the total revenue?
No, GRT, because the problem is, we've just, we've just taken that away. Do you want to stick with the 170?
No, no, it would, it would be reflective of a twelve million dollar reduction based on what we--
But why isn't this a range? See, I don't understand why it's not a range. If yesterday, the, the very projection of the tax itself was a range--
That's correct.
And since these two numbers have a, it's a mathematical function, this is a percentage of a number--
We didn't, we didn't run the analysis on the range for specifically the GRT increase--
Then where'd you come up with twelve?
Based on the, based on what they're projected for the 159, and then the 1% increase over the remaining five months.
You know, Speaker, when we looked at the, the percentage increase for 2007, it spiked at like eight or nine percent. When we looked at the other years, it was like two or three, so we kind of like got conservative and said, hey, maybe it's only two or three. So that's how we got the twelve million, we just looked at--
All right, so is that the number you want? Do you want us to cut GRT receipts by twelve million?
Mr. Speaker, can I interject?
Senator Bennett?
Because in the papers, Art, you were quoted saying fifteen million, so, and so which, and the governor's saying twelve, so--
Which, which, which is fifteen?
Fifteen, fifteen million is the amount for the real estate, I mean grocery sheet tax, the difference.
I don't recall that.
I, I think I can clarify that. The fifteen would have been, had we been collecting at the 1% increase for the final six months, but when we prorated for the five months, because if, if it applied in April, they wouldn't pay till May, so it would be only for the remaining five months of the year. So if, if we would have been able to collect it on April twentieth, it would have been fifteen, but if it's only the last five months, it would have been twelve.
Guys, I recognize at this point, we are to a certain extent hostage to whatever numbers you, you, you wish to generate here, so let me just put it this way, we need to adjust this number in revenue now to reflect the fact that we've deleted that. Can you just tell us what, what you want it to be deleted by, what you want the adjustment to be, and then, you know, we can vote on that?
Twelve million, sir.
Okay, which would give us what as a new number, since the way we affect it is we take a 170 and change it to--
It would return to the 159.
159, and what exactly, since we have to make a exact number?
It would, it would be 159, 541, 059.
I think Senator Guthers wants to make a motion to reduce it to that number. And I, and I think we should just be guided by whatever number you--
Senator Guthers, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, where are we? Mr. Chairman, I move to amend line twenty-three in section two with respect to estimated revenues, specifically gross receipts tax, from 171, 541, 059, to 159, 541, 059.
Just, excuse me for a second now.
Mr. Speaker, you recognize?
You said one, it's line twenty-three?
I think it's line twenty-five, I think if that's--
It's line twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Oh, I, yes, the substitute, I'm sorry.
Okay, say that again now.
Yeah, on line twenty-five, Mr. Speaker, I move to amend the general fund revenues for gross receipts taxes from 171, 541, 059, to 159, 541, 059. And this is in view of the deletion of the governor's proposed 1% increase in the gross receipts tax.
Okay, on the motion to delete line twenty-five of chapter two, page three, and the gross receipts tax from 171, 541, 059, to 159, 541, 059. On the motion, any objections on the, on the motion?
On the motion, yeah. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna raise any objections, I'm just gonna make a comment because I want to be, again, conservative like the administration. Obviously, with the amendment and taking out the increase in the GRT, with the new number at 158 million, 541, 059--
159.
Oh, 150, I'm sorry, 159. That would mean, and I'm going to go back to just year-to-date, where we are at year-to-date for the first five months, up by nine percent in gross receipts tax, we're about, we're up from the previous year by 5.4, almost close to 5.5 million dollars, which means is that if that is the determination of this administration, then moving forward for the next seven months, that they believe it will, that, that there will be no growth, it will be flat, and that all GRT collections, almost immediately, starting with a month that has not been finished yet, that the nine percent growth that we were tracking has now gone to zero. And, boy, that's conservative, because obviously you see something I don't see. I just want to make that comment, that we are already up by 5.5 million year-to-date, we're five months through the fiscal year, and from what you're saying right now, we will have five million dollars more than we had from the previous year, actually a little bit less, a little bit, actually, almost exactly. So for the next seven months, we can, you guys predict, there will be absolutely no growth every month compared to the previous fiscal year. I'm not going to object, because obviously, your number crunchers are prepared very well to project forward, but just want to make that comment. Thank you.
Okay, on the motion. Senator Bennett?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, on, just on that, on the motion to delete, I guess we all are very cognizant that, that the reduction that is reflected in the amendment will require a corresponding reduction in the authorization levels for the different departments and agencies if we are to continue at that spending, with the rest of the proposal. So while I fully understand the rationale behind that, let's not forget that this is the beginning of the work and we've created more work towards the middle part of the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Bennett. On the motion--
I, I think a clarification should be made.
Clarification?
Yeah, that, it's not a motion to delete, it's a motion to amend.
Motion to amend, yes.
Yes.
On the motion to amend, Senator, Senator Frank Blas.
Mr. Chair, same, same concern, I just want to make sure that it's a motion to amend as opposed to motion to delete.
Speaker Forbes? Wait, wait, okay. Okay, on, on the motion, okay, the motion is to amend on chapter two, line twenty-five, to amend the gross receipts tax number from 171, 541, 059, to 159, 541, 059. On the motion, any objections? Without objection, motion passes. Speaker Forbes?
We also deleted section eight in chapter six, which amends the use tax number. Do we have to change the use tax number in the revenue projection as well? Or is it so small that it's statistically insignificant?
It's a, it's a diff, I believe it's a different fund, and I don't think we made that adjustment on the revenue side.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about it, because just whatever comes in, comes in, right? Okay, that's all.
Senator Guthers?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion. The subtotal on, on the governor's bill, section two, presently is 415. I'm sorry?
Four one two.
Four one two. Oh, Judy, can I borrow your substitute bill? His total is four, one, two, seven, one, nine, two, nine, seven. I would like to amend that figure, Mr. Chairman, to read three, nine, three, nine, five, oh, six, one, eight, six. Six, eight, six, six, eight, six. And this is based upon the changes in the various categories of the general fund revenues that were presented. This is a subtotal figure. Three, nine, three, nine, five, oh, six, eight, six.
Okay, on--
Yes, just a matter of clarification again now, Mr. Chairman, yesterday, Senator from Baragada made an amendment on line twenty-two, twenty-three, to change the sixty-eight million dollars to seventy-five point six million. I just wanted to ask the main mover of the motion, but I think the total taxes here is the function of whatever we have on the top, right? So that will be, that's a matter of calculating it. So I don't think you really need to make the amendment, but I just wanted to, to know whether Senator Judy--
Yes.
Actually took that into consideration as well? The increase from sixty-eight to seventy-five million?
Yes, yes, she did.
You did? Okay, thanks.
Actually, if, if I may explain my amendment, sir--
You recognize now, Senator Guthers.
Thank you. Let me go through the categories based on the changes that were discussed yesterday and the new information from the governor's office. And please correct me if I'm wrong, corporate tax revenue is estimated to be sixty-one, four, nine, one, two, seven, one. Corporate amnesty revenue will be one million dollars. Individual income tax revenue, sixty, eight, six, three, seven, four, eight. Individual amnesty, nine million. Withholding, one, five, five, one, four, three, three, nine, three. Withholding amnesty, three million. Provision for tax refund, seventy-five, six hundred thousand. That's a minus. Grocery seats tax, one, five, nine, five, four, one, zero, five, nine. Grocery seat amnesty, twelve million. Real property amnesty, five million. Other taxes, two, five, one, one, two, one, five, which gives us a subtotal of three, nine, five--
Nine, three.
Uh, three, nine, three, nine, five, oh, six, eight, six. That's why I made the amendment.
On the motions, as Vice Speaker? On the motion--
Okay, well, I just wanted more clarification from what you're saying. I know that you, on line twenty-four, you skipped that in terms of the subtotal, that you, you know, you need to correct that because of the seventy-five million six. That, that was-- Was that, you know, amended?
Vice Speaker, you, you recognize?
Well, there was an amendment made by the senator from Baragada, and it would pass with no objections for the seventy-five million in the tax refund provision. There was no objection.
There was no objection, yeah.
Oh, I think-- The only thing I'm asking is this, the subtotal here. The total income taxes should be less than two, 221 million, or it should be more than 221 million, because we have added from sixty-eight point eight million to seventy-five point six. I, I think it's just a matter of computation, but since the, the good lady from Mangilo is doing the total taxes that includes the subtotal of the total income tax plus the grocery seed, real property, and other taxes, you might as well correct it now.
That's why, you know, I'm, I'm going to make a statement and then I'm going to make a, a suggestion in that, you know, we're gonna, when, you know, subject to change in subtotals in engrossment of the bill, because there's been amendments made, I want to add that one of the last amendments we made yesterday was to delete the real property tax amnesty at five million in line twenty-seven. It does not belong in the general fund category, it belongs in special fund under the W in territorial education facilities fund. That amendment is already made, so obviously, there's going to be changes-- So as long as we get this thing in, in the engrossment phase--
No objection, Mr. Chairman, as long as it balances out--
Okay, so we're--
In the end.
Okay, we're still in the motion for the amendment of Senator Guthers' amendment.
Maybe, if I may suggest, withdraw the amendment--
Withdraw the--
Because later on, you know, it would have to be adjusted by, by the, you know, with the engrossment that will come about later. Otherwise, if you make the amendment now and pass, then we cannot move it.
The 159 passed.
Yes, it's already passed.
That's, that's the only motion you need.
Okay.
Okay, as far as the total, let it be right now.
No objection, Mr. Chairman.
So you have to withdraw your motion?
Withdraw pending engrossment, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. On the motion to withdraw the, the amendment, without objections, it should passes. Senator, Vice Speaker?
At this point, I'm sorry, no, I, in fact, I, my staff wrote out an amendment here, but I guess they weren't, we had done the amendment last night, so first, just disregard this amendment.
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, we had passes yesterday.
That was worked, we worked on that yesterday.
Senator Bennett?
Thank you very much. You know, the, I guess everything here is really kind of in flux, and, you know, given the, the presentation of new data, the change of totals and subtotals and so forth, but something of concern for me is maybe a change in policy or direction, you know, I, I happened to read, to see the news last night, and in regards to the revenue projections, and the governor, pretty clear, said, I don't even think we're going to get thirty million in tax amnesty. Now, is that a change in this? Is he asking for a change in this figure here now, or is he just telling us he gave us something that he doesn't think is going to happen?
For, for the, see, when, when we looked at the period that we did it the last time in 1999, and the percentage of what we received versus the, the--
No, I--
Receivables--
Sure.
And we were comparing it to now, the period now is a lot shorter than it was last time, so that's why, you know, we either have to extend the period--
Sure.
To, to get that amount, the thirty million.
I, I don't--
And plus, you know, we, we, my staff is a lot more trained than we were in 1999, we know the rules, the laws of collections that we weren't privy to last time. We've had several phases of training in collections, but, and, and this time, what we're going to do is we're going to write taxpayers the letters, because a lot of times they don't understand or they don't know what's available to them. So we're going to inform them that this is what we have, you have so much money in receivables, if you want to go and pay that off, this is how much you're going to save in interest and penalty. So if, when, when we get taxpayers to see what they can save, they probably come in and--
No, I don't, I'm not doubting you. I'm just stating that, you know, this is a presentation that supposedly comes from the governor, and he's saying this is the confidence level he has in this, and when he presented it, but last night, he made a new statement that is saying he doesn't think we're even going to get four thirty, is he changing his mind? And should we reflect that in here, or are we going to stick with this? It's just kind of trying to, sending mixed messages. You're convincing me--
I'm, I'm going to stick, because I know my staff, they're dedicated employees, and they've been working their, you know, to get the revenues in so that the government can survive, and I know if I asked them, I tasked them to, because of the urgency, they would, they would deliver, they would try their hearts to, to get that thirty.
So the governor has not expressed any doubt to you about achieving the thirty million?
The doubt was because of the, the period--
Yeah.
Three months. We may need to extend that to get the thirty to the end of the year, by the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah. No, again, I'm just saying that, you know, it's kind of a mixed message, the governor's saying, these are the numbers, these are our confidence levels, I'm asking the legislature to support me on these numbers, and then before we can even move forward to support him-- And then before we can even move forward to support him, he makes a public statement saying, "By the way, that number I gave you guys, I'm not even sure we're going to achieve that."
Maybe I confused him when I said, when I gave him the numbers and the, and the period that we have now.
It's very possible he's confused. I think it's very possible.
He may have gotten my message that it may not happen, but it, from what I see, if it doesn't happen in three months, we can make something else happen to get the 30 by September 30.
Okay, all right. I just want to, like I said, you know, too bad the governor's representative is, from the policy side, not from the administration side, because I know that you've presented that to the governor, you've outlined your plan, and you convinced him, I'm sure, because he submitted the number, you know, when the bill was submitted. But as of yesterday, he was voicing doubts over his own numbers and the numbers that he's presenting on behalf, you know, and it's just, he's trying, it undercuts you down here, and I just don't think it's fair for him to do that. You know, if he has doubts on it, I think he should tell that to you. You hash out, you know, as the technical expert, and the administrator and executor of tax policy here, you know, that you guys hash it out, and then he either backs you or he doesn't back you. And he did that already when he submitted these numbers, and then as of yesterday, he's expressing that he's doubtful, it's just not doing you any favors, and it's not presenting any sense of comfort to us, you know, that these numbers are fairly tight with regards to the presentation and the confidence level. So I just want to make that statement, you know, that I understand why you believe you can achieve this, because you've outlined some of the issues that are going to be resolved from the last time we did this, that will enhance collection and so forth, but it doesn't do me any, the governor's not giving me any confidence when he's expressing on the news that he's doubtful we can achieve this. So that, unless, I'm hoping that if the governor wants that number to change based upon any new information or any new considerations that he has that are, happen after the submission of these numbers, then I think he should send that down in a formal statement and asking us to make adjustments or not. And he shouldn't leave you hanging out here, trying to defend this number, and he's telling us, and he won't, put it that way. I, you know, that's just not the way to lead on this issue, and, you know, it just exacerbates this, the process that we're having here and doesn't advance it. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Ben. Senator Guthers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to go through some of these numbers, just to make sure I'm accurate in what I've absorbed in the last few days, particularly with our discussions and our analysis with Mr. Loggins, Mr. Delarosa, and John. Please verify, corporate taxes, based on all our discussion, we're estimating to be 61, 491, 271.
Yes, that's correct.
Correct, okay. The amnesty we're estimating for corporate taxes will bring in about $1 million, $1 million.
That's correct.
Individual income tax, we're estimating at 68, 63, 748.
That's 60 million?
Yeah.
Yes.
Individual amnesty for individual income tax, we hope to be able to generate $9 million?
Yes.
Withholding taxes, 155, 143, 393?
Yes.
And the amnesty for withholding taxes, we're hoping to generate $3 million?
Yes.
Okay. Now, for the tax refunds, yesterday we agreed that we're going to see a minus $75,600,000. And our total income tax, therefore, would generate 214, 898, 412. Total income tax, 214, 898, 412.
It cannot be, because the motion that was made by Senator, our Speaker Ben Panglin increased that from 68.8 to 75.6.
That's included.
So that's, the total should be much higher.
We subtract.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, okay, okay. I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's included, Speaker. Grocery seats tax, 159, 541, 059.
Yes.
And the grocery seats tax amnesty, we're hoping to generate $12 million?
Yes, that's correct.
Other taxes, 2,511, 215.
That's correct.
That would give us a total, subtotal in this area, these areas, of 386, 439, 471. That's how I add everything. So 386, 439, 471. Now, although we haven't gotten to them yet, under federal sources, you're estimating 59,329, 029, correct? And use of money in property, we're projecting 2,788, 805, correct? Is that correct?
That's correct.
License fees and permits, you're projecting 1,452, 186, correct?
Yes.
And for departmental charges, we're estimating 1,213, 013, correct?
That's correct.
Now, that would give us an overall total in all categories of 451, $451,000, 222, 504. The governor is estimating the overall general revenue at 477, 502, 329. There's a big variance there, Mr. Chairman, from the governor's estimate of 477, 502, 329, and these totals that I've just shared with you of 451, 222, 504. What is going to happen as a result of this? We cannot sustain this government at 451, 222, 504. Am I correct, Mr. Loggins?
From the numbers, it looks like...
Yeah. These are the numbers, I mean, all I did is add them up. If the goal is 477, 502, 329, and at this point, if we're going to generate 451, 222, 504, we have a significant problem, and we're going to have to look at other things. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to share that, because the totals are quite startling. We're far from 477. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Guthers. Senator, Senator Ben?
Thank you very much. Just bear with me if you won't, if you won't mind, please. And it's kind of just to take a look at this, just the tax amnesty from a, both policy and a financial perspective. The amnesty is supposed to, well, we hope and anticipate, based upon a review of past experience, to generate the 9 million and the 3 million and so forth. Out of a total receivable of...
91.
91 million. And of the 91, when we collect the 9 million and the 3 million, what do we anticipate the waiver of interest or penalties?
The last time we collected $28 million, we forgave $8 million in interest and penalty.
So $8 million. If I gave you, if this body gave you $1 million to put towards enforcement, what do you think you can collect if you had that resource available in place? Would you think you would be able to generate 9 million or more than 9 million?
When we did our study several years ago, of what collectors make and what auditors make, per auditor and per collector, I believe per collector was, it was about 700 some thousand.
700 some thousand, I remember.
At an average salary of about, maybe 30?
30.
30 something.
30 some thousand.
And then for each auditor, this is based on like their production in the past, and then we divide by the number of employees that were there. We looked at, assessing taxes of about 300 some? Yeah, about 300 to 400,000 per auditor. At a, you know, and their rates are not that high either, it's about maybe like 35,000 starting. But, you know, when you give us the money, it takes time to train.
It takes time to ramp up, to train and so forth, so you really...
We have been training, but, you know, in 1999, when we had that, everybody left us, and it took time to train who we hired. But our collectors are up to par with...
They're pretty good.
And our auditors are almost there. We still need more training.
Sure. So if you had, and how many, how many cases could these guys close in a month or two months, you think?
If you just give me the million dollars, it takes time, it's not going to happen like in two or three months.
Right.
It's not only just collectors and auditors, but, you know...
It's the input to process, to assess?
To assess, to get it to the collectors, to get somebody to look at the return itself, and see if it needs to be looked at by the auditors. The system is there.
Right. You just need to, you need the resources, the manpower resources, trained and so forth.
Also, there's a lot of technology out there that sometimes we're doing it the old way, putting things into the system, when, you know, if you get us to be online and people put in their tax returns themselves, it takes away from processing.
Processing it.
Yeah, so once they push the send, it's processed and it's put into our system. Otherwise, somebody has to sit down and try to analyze, and sometimes they don't understand why this number is, so they suspend it, they send out a 30-day letter, and then it takes time for them to answer, and if we don't have the staff to follow up in those 30 days, it sits there, then statute dies, and we can't collect.
Right. But, you know, it may, the reason why I'm asking is, it may be time, I mean, maybe this is the best time to make that investment. I know it's the time when money's tight and so forth, but we make this investment now, you know, and move forward on it, and give you the resources, then next year will be better, the year after that will be better, and we, you know, we actually move forward. You know, rather than now, we're not moving forward, we're not doing anything to make sure it doesn't happen again. And really, that's, you know, if our plan is every eight years we do a tax amnesty, because we don't have the resources to collect between those 10, eight years, then we're not progressing. And I know that this body in the past had given you some resources, and that was helpful, but it wasn't sustained. And I think that's what we need to do as a policy from this body, that we may be, you know, penny wise and pound foolish in this kind of policy, not that you are, because you have no other recourse, basically. You know, I'm sure that if you had the resources, you would never suggest a tax amnesty as a way of collecting money. I'm sure that grates you in your stomach, and you probably need some Rol-Aids, you know? Because that just goes against the taxman, you know?
Not just me, my staff.
Sure, absolutely.
They're kind of upset with me, because I'm asking them to do this when they're going through a lot of training and exercise and diligence and doing the work. Now I'm saying, "That's all right, guys, let's try to get the money in and forgive the interest." They're really enforcement-minded when we train, so IRS training really sets their mind in saying, "Hey, man, if you owe the government..."
Let's do it right, you know?
Also, I would like to mention that a lot of my staff are like John and I, been there for a while, and, you know, if things happen, they're not going to be there, and you're going to have that exodus of seasoned employees.
Yeah, and so, really, that's, I just want to examine that as a policy call, you know, in terms of, because of the dire financial straits, we're going to suspend basically enforcement, at least for those periods, and whether that's in the best interests of the government and the employees itself. And whether or not, again, are we being, you know, penny wise and pound foolish, that we're going to get all of these resources, give up the interest, not beef up the enforcement and the training of the department, that if they, if we had focused on that and pledged those resources there, that we won't have to do this, you know, today and in the future. So I wanted to get that clear idea, and, you know, we're kind of backed in a corner here, and this may, there may be no other way, but I'm not sure that that's the case. So I just wanted to thank you for shedding that light and so forth, and maybe we really need to begin to take a look at, you know, when we say prioritize, we can't prioritize the cash for education if we don't prioritize the system to get the cash so we can prioritize to get it to education, you know? And we're giving up too much, you know? We may be giving up too much by shortchanging, you know, the resources available to the agency most critical to getting us those resources.
We have a lot of, in my department, a lot of ideas how to make money, but when we don't have the funding to get there, it just sits there. Especially like the real property tax appraisal, I mean, that system, if it does happen, data from land management, data from public works...
Should all come in.
...are collected, and there's data that we can look at and compare it to a tax return, land sales, did you report it? Things like that, that we, you know, we have to go digging into affidavits to see, which just takes months and months and months to complete.
Yeah, so, well, feel free to share those ideas, because, you know, I think you have a body here that has reacted positively in the past, and perhaps with this, you know, given where we are today, that the solution is not, that will be given to you is not, here's a, you know, $100,000 or $200,000, you know, in order to throw some resources at it today without building the foundation and the system, so that you don't have to keep throwing resources at it. That once you upgrade and make the investments in the technology and the personnel, that you actually reduce your operating costs in the future, but increase your return on that investment. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Ben. Senator Suzuki?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Morning, gentlemen, thanks for joining us again.
Morning.
A little more upbeat and rested, but I want to do a follow-up to Speaker Ben's comments on the resources you need to properly do your job, and I also want, can you give us an update on what have you done in the past few years regarding delinquent accounts, you know, in attempts to collect on them and actually take people to court if they were not complying and they had the resources to do that? So that's one aspect, and then I'm going to, after that, I want to do a follow-up on Speaker Ben's comments, because I know you've had some dialogue, I believe, with the Attorney General's Office in the past.
Right. Part of the problem when we first, John and I first came in, was our, how we keep records. When somebody comes in to make a payment over at Treasure Guam, it takes time for it to leave the treasurer's office, to get up to their accounting, to get to our accounting, and then to get to their accounts. Sometimes it can take like two years. A major accomplishment that Department of Administration and myself put together was the point-of-sale. You come in, you make a payment, that payment is directly through the computer system, credited to a revenue account, and then credited to your account. So that's why your monthly reports that you're getting are a lot more accurate than in the past. Our training efforts that we've had from IRS, I guess DOI, we had contact with DOI in getting federal funds to fund... I guess DOI, we had contact with DOI and getting federal funds to fund the instructors from IRS to come over. Over a million dollars that was spent from that. The online filing of ten forty EZ has helped us with our processing. People who file ten forty EZs are, are now being processed as they push the send button into our system. We're looking at, looking at, trying to get a system where we can verify W twos filed with a, a tax return to the employer. And if that's, there's no cash received from that employer, it, it signals the collection branch to go after this guy so we can get that cash that's supposed to be in our trust fund, that's supposed to be put into our, our coffers. Our, our, captured a lot earlier than in the past where we, you know, we couldn't tell where until, or when a, a cash payment was compared to a, a refund that was paid on that W two or tax return.
Okay, and then if you mentioned W twos, and I presume you're doing the same thing with ten ninety-nines?
Yes, ten ninety-nines. And we've, we also have problems with data from IRS that may be useful to us that we couldn't put into our system because we don't have the, the, I guess, the technical people to take that data and stick it into our, upload it into our, our system to make comparisons with IRS interest income that they, they know their residents of Guam. Right? So in the past, IRS have, has been giving us tapes of these interests or miscellaneous income. And when they came over to do a study, it, you know, it wasn't being uploaded. That's why I was asking the Vice Speaker, and he helped me a lot with the positions for, for those personnels that I need. Right now, when the system goes down, one person takes care of everything. You know, when I need something done, it can't be done right away. Numbers that we need, right, Vice Speaker, that he asked for, for, for forecasting, for things that we need to see, especially in, in audit, if we need to look at an industry or, you know, like real estate, why is real estate real high, but yet income tax reporting is low, things like that, that we may be able to analyze with our system that we're not doing now.
Okay, Art, you know, you know, it's gonna lead me to like tax evaders and people with serious delinquent accounts. What have we done with the AG's office to go after them?
We are meeting with, with the AG, trying to get an attorney. And we even met with Department of Interior and they, they said they were, they're willing to pay half the cost of, of the AG. I'm meeting with the Attorney General to see if they can supply us the, the one Attorney General to help us and then ask I, Department of Interior to fund half of that, of that cost.
Okay. And my belief is that, you know, amnesty programs are great, but if you don't have effective enforcement and follow up on those delinquent accounts, then, then you, you're probably not gonna collect as many on, on, from, from the amnesty program.
Right. Our plan was back then when, to push prosecution of, of cases, but it never got to the courts. We did do the investigations and it never got to court.
And, and I'll go to one final area and then, and then I'll, then I'm done, Mr. Chairman. And, and that is a follow up to Senator Ben's comments on the resources. The people you need, the process of hiring new people and training them, getting them online is, is a lengthy process. So, and, and I think we kind of opened up the door about thinking outside the box now. Other professionals have been allowed to come back on a limited term basis. Employees who are retired from your agency, who probably used to have the skills in auditing and follow up and research and, and doing collections. How many such people do you have that might be available and should we pursue and authorize some type of limited term employment authority to take back retirees to help you in the, in the immediate future?
In the past, when, when, when I first started, and when John and I first started, we noticed like a lot of retired IRS agents working for the department with the salary like whatever the max is, Revenue Agent Four, Step Ten, they were getting that kind of salary to come here and work. Today, before nineteen ninety-nine, we kind of got our staff almost to that level where they can handle that kind of case. Then they left us and then it became difficult to train that fast to get our auditors, local auditors to be at that level. And we've asked for like, for an attorney from IRS, if, you know, somebody is willing to come over, ready to retire, and when they look at the numbers that we're giving them for salary, they're not, you know, they're making mega bucks back there. And the numbers we're giving here, which, which are the rates of the AG, they're, you know, I guess they don't wanna move here and, and make that move here and, at that rate.
Okay. Well, what about our own people who've retired from, from RevTax? Are there any available who can help you in any room and we can perhaps consider authorizing temporary, limited term hiring of these people?
The, the only thing is they'll be double dip because they're already receiving their, their retirement.
Yes, exactly. And then that's a willingness by this body perhaps to consider authorizing them to come back and double dip for limited projects and short-term purposes.
Yes, if, if you allow that, John and I will double dip.
Except you two are exempt from that proposal. But, Mr. Chairman, I, I thank you and I really wanna open the door about thinking about that because if you do a follow up, just, just think that when you hire new people, how long does it take to train? And get them effective on, on the job, whereas you got people that have the experience and knowledge.
That's true.
And are retired, and, and I'm willing to propose that we authorize limited term and, and not, and, and to allow the double dipping. And I think we can, we can encourage our colleagues to support something like that on a short-term basis. We can certainly waive it. I, I hear a supporting vote right behind me, so. Anyway, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Speaker Forbes?
Art. Kinda like what Frank was talking about. I, I imagine like these, these cases for income tax and stuff, these are folks that have already gone through the collection process and just don't respond, right? For the most part?
For what? For, for?
The ones you're talking to the AG about prosecuting for, for, for income tax.
Right, there, there's some, a couple of, maybe three or four cases that we've completed in the past for failure to file, I believe, and I know one, one was for fraud.
Right. But you mean, you've gone through a process with a lot of these and, and they, they've been non-responsive or they've been outright fraudulent or they've been whatever, right? Yeah, and, and the reason, I'm not asking it for that reason. The reason I'm asking is, is I wanna relate it to real property. Cause you got a chunk of real property out there, right? And maybe somebody already asked this question previously. But it seems to me that the real property process is a teeny bit more straightforward perhaps in terms of government recourse because, well, here's my question. My question is, when you have an amnesty for real property, that's wonderful. But the government just about never actually acts on delinquent real property cases, right?
Right. I, I can't recall whenever.
Neither can I.
Ever we sold property?
I'm scratching my head thinking, was there ever a tax auction that I can remember in the history of Guam that I can remember? I don't think there is. And, you know, in, in keeping with Senator Suzuki's statement, and amnesty is wonderful because, you know, maybe you'll save on interest and penalties. But if you never, ever, ever have any fear that you'll actually be dispossessed, as is the recourse that is available in law for failure to pay large amounts, then, then maybe it's not as compelling. Is there any thought to ever starting to move on, on the recourses that are early available in law with respect to real property?
We've taught, we've, we've talked about it in the past and then when we wanted to do something like that, we didn't have the, the legal attorneys to see if they were doing it properly. And we don't wanna proceed and-
Cause I'm no lawyer and I'm no expert on real estate law or anything like that, but, but it seems to me that's a, that's a relatively straightforward process. I know there is a redemption period where you can pay back, but you gotta get the process going, but it seems like relatively straightforward. And I, I think it would probably help if people started to think they were really at risk of actually being dispossessed of property if they didn't. And everyone understands, I think, that it's not a question of your, you, you know, you're supposed to pay it on such, such a date and you're three days late, that's it, you lost your house. You know, it's never that way. In fact, there are people who probably never pay for decades and it's no big deal right now because there's no, no recourse, so. Maybe that's something you guys can look at. That's just what I was gonna suggest. And on the subject of real property, and I know this was asked previously, but I'm gonna ask it again because there's a very specific purpose in, in my asking this. There are times, Art, and by the way, I wanna tell you something. I really appreciate the two of you being here because, you know, you're answering questions in some cases that really aren't questions for you to answer, but you're here and so we ask it. And you've been very, very dignified in, in the whole process and I do appreciate it. But you know, sometimes I don't like reading the paper or listening to the TV news. Cause I hear things that, that kind of make me go hmm. And I did hear something yesterday and, or actually I read it in the paper this morning that made me go hmm. And, and as has been said earlier, it was, you know, the governor's statement that, well, I don't think we're gonna realize that kind of revenue from, from amnesty, which really blew my mind. The first thing I wanna establish for the record, cause I, I'm really afraid that before this bill is done somehow someone's gonna get the impression we came up with a tax amnesty program.
I did. It was my plan.
Okay. So, so I wanna, I wanna be real clear about this. You designed the tax amnesty program, right? You presented it to the governor, right?
Yes, we did.
The, the tax amnesty program is a proposal of the administrations to the legislature, right?
Yes, it is.
It's not our proposal to you, it's your proposal to us.
That's correct.
When you proposed it, you, I'm sure must have been under the assumption that everybody supported it on the administration end, right? Or else you wouldn't have?
Yes.
Okay. And the, the estimates about how much the tax amnesty program would bring in, which have been met with a little, little bit of skepticism by some members of this body, those are the products of the administration as well, right?
The administration? I mean, I mean the amnesty?
Yeah.
Yes.
Did you have any idea that the governor was not confident about the numbers he was setting down or? And I'm not trying to-
I guess I was the one that, that gave him that confidence because when I, when we looked at the numbers and we, and the period that we collected last time versus this time, it's, it's a lot shorter.
I see.
And the receivable was a lot higher back then, was a little bit higher than it was now.
Maybe you, you should talk to him again, cause maybe his confidence needs some bolstering on that subject. But, but the point is, is that I, I, I just want it to be crystal clear that when we're all said and done here, this amnesty program is not a product of the legislature. I really don't want anybody coming back in six months and saying, well, I don't know why the legislature did that tax amnesty. It's not our idea. It's a proposal from the administration. It looks like we're gonna go along with it in some cases with some reluctance, but, but in terms of what the numbers mean, but I just wanna be clear, it's not our proposal, it's a proposal of the administration. And the numbers that are contained therein in that proposal come from the administration. And whatever numbers they are, are numbers that the administration has proposed to us. It's not numbers we've proposed. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And thank you for opening up the feasibility for Bill Number Eighty-two, the Tax Recovery Act, Mr. Speaker. Thank you. Speaker Beal? Okay, on federal, federal sources, any, anything else on revenue? Any comments on revenue? Okay, we'll go to federal sources, I guess up Section B and Section Two, federal sources, income tax collection, Section Thirty funds?
Yeah, can we just explain that, that the rise in that, Art? Because we're predicting a, a huge reduction in next fiscal year. According to the governor's two thousand and eight budget submittal.
On the budget we gave you, it went up like seven million dollars because of the immigration fees.
About three million? You have the immigration fee fifty-seven?
The immigration fees, that wasn't included there, so we're including that in there now. Yeah, that, that Section Thirty, we're just using Section, I mean, federal funds, we're just using Section Thirty to, to get that number in. When we found out, it wasn't including the immigration fees.
Were immigration fees in another category?
It was, it's, it's not part of Section Thirty. It's another-
Right, but in the, in the original governor's submittal, was there another section for immigration fees?
No, it's under federal sources, I believe.
So there, there was a, there were, there was a breakout? In other words, in the, in the, in the original, again, you know, Art, you're not familiar with a budget, the totality of the budget of the one that was submitted. So my question was, I'm looking in the old bill and in, and the, the governor had submitted, is he saying that he just forgot to submit the immigration fees or is there an increase in the immigration fees or?
When we submitted the, the change.
The change.
The change. It didn't include the immigration fees in it, so we're just including it.
Right. Was the immigration fees included in the, in any other revenue section in the old budget?
I don't know.
So, in other words, this could be just a wash because immigration, it's like moving a tax amnesty from one section to the other. Where in, in the previous budget, which I wasn't here for, and that's why I'm asking the question, was immigration, was there a separate line item for, under federal sources for Section Thirty and immigration fees? And it said fifty-seven for Section Thirty and two million for immigration? And now we're combining the thing into one line item and just increasing it to fifty-nine?
That, I don't know, sir.
Okay. I, I think that's a question that just needs to be answered from maybe BBMR or-
I'll find out.
Yeah, we'll find out. We need to, I just wanna know that. You know, in other words, I don't have to find another two million dollars on top of that or two million in cuts because there's really no change there or something. Thank you.
Okay, on the same line though, Mr. Chairman. On the immigration fees, right now, aren't they collecting about five hundred per head? To five hundred? Oh, okay, from five hundred to seven fifty. And they, they're anticipating a lot more H two workers to be coming in, right? In fact, many of them are already coming in. And so, yeah, I'm just following up in terms of what was brought up. One, this, you know, the, the, since you're putting Section Thirty with the immigration fee, fees and indirect costs, you're talking about less than two million dollars that would increase on this area. Is there, why, why the conservatism on this? Okay, well, okay, that needs to be answered, okay, later on. And the other one that, since we're just sort of bringing up concern, on page two, page four, line, line three, I just wanted to get some explanation as to why you're lowering the license fees and permits from one point six to one point four?
I think that was driven by the, the numbers that came in the first five months.
I, I heard that, you know, well, last year, year to date, okay, that we, we, last year, we, we, we collected around hundred and thirty-five. That was the amount year to date as of April. And my, that according to the tracking now, year to date right now is four hundred and thirty thousand. So, you know, this, that needs to be adjusted, Art. It's, you know, even if you look at it in, in terms of common sense here, why would we be collecting less this year than what was it last year? There are a lot more economic activities, a lot more building permits, a lot more businesses opening. That was already answered earlier. And to see a decrease from one point six million to one point four. one point six million to one point four, you know, I, can you explain that?
Vice Speaker?
Point of information, again, I brought that up last, yesterday, we're about two hundred and twenty percent year-to-date for all these licenses and permits from the previous year. So, again, obviously, there's something happening, and it's very, very, again, first five months, two hundred and twenty percent is quite, you know, that's one heck of a percentage increase in growth. I just want to put that as point of information.
Speaker Bigelow? Okay, the question was the explanation of the decrease from one point four, or, yeah, from one point six to one point four?
Saying that there are a lot more economic activities right now, and it was mentioned earlier, yesterday, there are a lot more business license that are being taken, you know, being applied for. People are coming in to pay their grocery tax so that they can clear it, right? Construction companies are popping up, mom and pop stores are coming up.
Senator, can we table this and we'll find out more about this information?
Okay. No, that's fair. I don't want to belabor the issue.
Speaker Ben?
John, can I ask you to find out about something else? You know, the immigration fees, it just occurs to me that, I know that there's been an increase in application fees for U.S. citizenship, permanent residencies, and so forth, and they really have increased from about two hundred and fifty dollars to, some application fees are five hundred, some are seven fifty now, which is about a three hundred percent increase. But the problem is that, in the old days, or up until maybe a few, a couple of years ago, when you applied for immigration, for, through the immigration, in the back of the application it says, "Make your check payable to Treasurer of Guam." Now, it's, "Make your check payable to the U.S. Treasury." So, we don't, in the old days, we captured all of that money. Now, it goes directly to the U.S. government, and we really have a hard time getting it back, remit it to us. So, I'm not sure, you know, if, number one, it's good that we have an increase, because we have the potential to recover more, but in the old days, we recovered all of it because it was made directly to us and deposited into our accounts, and now it's going to the U.S. Immigration, and they really are giving us a hard time. I know Senator Munia Barnes has written to Congresswoman Burdahlou, and has been working with her to try and resolve this matter under remittance of those fees, because we saw the collections increase from about, you know, one million, two million a year to even four, five, six, seven million dollars, but we're not getting those fees anymore. And so, if these are, as a result of, if the increase is a result of the increase in the fees, we hope to recover more, but we're not getting it, then, you know, the confidence level, again, in that number may be suspect. So, I just wanted to kind of get the governor and BBMRs and the individuals responsible for this to do that. And the other thing is, of course, that if these are passport fees also, that the passport fees are earmarked to you, Art, at Rev and Tax, and to the public school library, and divided between Rev and Tax and the public school libraries, so they really are almost special funds versus general operating funds.
I think the passport fees goes directly into Treasurer.
Yes, the passport fees do go directly, you know, but then, they really shouldn't be, they're special revenue funds, they're not general revenue, because they are earmarked for those programs. They're program funds, basically. So, they're not available for operational expenses, only to sustain those programs. Part of it goes to you, and part of it goes to the public school libraries.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Wapet?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Art, since you're gonna come back to us to give us a further explanation, licenses and fees and permits, is that if you can really also tell us what's actually happening on those specific months, because there's, the numbers are so dramatic in terms of the differences, like, for example, November last year was nineteen thousand, and for this year, it was, for this fiscal year, was a hundred and thirty-three. So, I mean, so, and then, when you look in December, last year was thirty-two thousand, and then for this fiscal year was a hundred and twenty-nine thousand. And then, when you go to March, it's the reverse. There's a, last year, the fiscal year was eighty-four thousand, and then now for, the projection for March is nineteen. So, we're not talking about maybe a nine thousand dollar difference, but for many of these, the numbers are so extreme. And then, when you take July, what is happening in July, where last fiscal year was three hundred and nine thousand that was collected, and then the projection for this year is only eighty-two thousand? So, I mean, these numbers are just too far, and apart, that I think we really would like to have some explanation, because the other years, they were, they're much closer, with the exception of last fiscal year and this fiscal year.
We'll get back to you, Senator.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Wapet. Okay, anything else on federal sources, use of money and property, Subsection C? Senator Ben?
I hate to ask you this, Art, again, because it really isn't your bailiwick, you know? But the use of money and property, I assume, is the interest earned on our accounts that are in the deposits and the cash collections that we have between the time we write the checks and the time that we collect it. Is that generally correct?
I'm not sure.
Yeah. So, the use of money and property, and if we're seeing such a dramatic reduction in cash available, that means we don't have the use of money and property to generate the interest, because it doesn't stick in, it doesn't stick in the account. As soon as it hits, it's gone. We write the checks and we release the checks.
There's some, maybe like the EIC fund that's there, and...
Okay.
There to release the EIC.
Right. Okay.
But I really don't know what those accounts...
Yeah, so, you know, I mean, there may be some trust accounts that are there and so forth, that are there, but I think in those trust accounts, those interests are into, placed into the suspended accounts first, and then transferred to the regular operating accounts after a truing up, or all the obligations are met, you know, so they stay in that account. But if that's, if we're seeing such a bad cash flow, in terms of that, you know, we go, almost go from paycheck to paycheck, we don't have the use of that money in that respect, so you won't see the huge dramatic increase. So, I was just wondering what that increase would be, can be attributable to, given the condition of the cash of the government, and the inability to use that cash between the time we collect it and the time we release it for payment. It just doesn't remain in our hands for any real length of time, and there may be one or two accounts that are there as settlement accounts or trust accounts and so forth, that could explain that, but we don't know what those are, and whether or not our assumptions are correct on that. So, that's something that I think is, to me, again, questionable, and at this time, without that explanation.
Thank you.
Just point of information.
Senator Sibylle?
Yeah. Art, you said you're not privy to that information. What agency would have that information?
It looks like DOE, because they're the ones that control that.
Reason for that, I just see the Director of Administration right out here, and she might be able to just step into the room and answer that question. Chairman, maybe she can ask, she's right here, so. And the second thing is that, you know, not only the use of money, is there, is there any properties that belong to the government that are being, where we make income? Because these are some of the things that were talked about in terms of some of the government Guam assets that are just laying dormant and not, was that making revenue? So, the Director of Administration here. Thank you. Good morning, Lou.
Thank you.
Senator Ben, I guess you can reiterate your question again on that, or was it Senator Shumuzu?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think, I was listening out there, and I was trying to call the office to see whether or not, what you offered as perhaps an explanation in terms of why it grew. It could be interest either on any of the type of trust funds that can be, that can revert to the general fund for use. But I'll call the office to confirm that, but if you look at last year to this year, it seems to be an increase.
Senator Sibylle, you still have the one?
Yeah, that's fine. Lou, they say the use of money and property, is there any, what's the property that this category will come?
I don't know the details, so, Senator.
Yeah, okay, so that's just more like a generic...
That's right. Sometimes there's a hundred sub-accounts under that one general category, and there may be small, I don't know whether, like, the agricultural leases, I think that goes into a special fund.
Okay. Mr. Speaker, did you, were you wanting to speak? Okay. Anyone else on use of money and property? Senator Ben?
Yeah, just, kind of just curious, Lou, and maybe, what is our current balance in the general fund, do you know, by any chance?
In terms of...
Cash?
Cash. Not much, but I'm sure, I mean, there's, I didn't look at it as of yesterday ending.
Okay. Can we just get that, maybe, yeah?
Sure.
Nothing urgent there, but I'm just...
I'm trying to build for next week's...
Right, yeah, okay.
Requirements.
Are we into special funds, or?
Special funds.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'm just, you know, we see, I mean, we can see the fluctuation in the taxes and so forth, but are we really that dead on on this that we don't need to change any of these categories, especially those that are tied to retail activity? For example, the Healthy Futures Fund. Any additional data, first month's tracking, five-month tracking, that could result in any kind of reconsideration of that number at all?
I think since, when this revised bill was being prepared, we were zeroing in on the, just the amendments to the current two budget bills, and Section Two just happened to stay in, but there were no changes. Your question is, did we look at what the trackings are on these, and whether we are proposing any changes to it?
Changes, yeah.
I know we did not.
Okay. So, it's possible that these also could change upward, or if the general trend is for the first section of the bill downward? That's possible?
I mean, that's a possibility.
Okay.
Speaker Ben, I mean, I'm sorry, Speaker Forbes?
It would seem more than just possible. It would seem absolutely guaranteed, because in the case of the healthy, you know, some of these funds are actually just derivatives of other funds, aren't they?
These ones, looking at it real quickly, they, these have their own funding sources.
Every single one of them? Healthy Futures has its own funding source? It is distinct and completely different?
It's a, it's a tax that goes directly.
And it is completely distinct from any other tax?
Yes, it is. Tied to.
So, people are gonna be doing a lot of smoking and a lot of drinking, but they're not gonna be buying Spam? Okay, I guess so. All right. I just wanted to, so, I would think that, you know, it's, activity's activity, and it would tend to reflect, but that's okay. That's cool. Remember, we passed that tobacco regulation bill, so...
Yeah, just from that, I, you know, just having come into the Twenty-Ninth Guam Legislature, I'm just looking back at the Healthy Future Funds. If, is, what is the, is this a balance? Is this additional monies for next year? Is this, this is in the revenue forecast, it's being forecast to come in at ten point six million dollars? We're not getting any more from the federal funds, I mean, federal tax settlement, the tobacco settlement?
That is a different type of fund. The Healthy Futures Fund here that you see is the, these are generated by local taxes on tobacco, alcohol and tobacco. There is the Tobacco Trust Fund that, it's held in trust, and we can use it for certain purposes, but that's not, that's a different fund, Senator.
Just educate me, you're saying that there is another trust fund? That it is not included in the general fund revenues?
No.
That's, yeah, why is that? It used to be, and not anymore, but it still exists? So, separate out of this, or it just stays there, and that's where it builds interest or so forth? Can we tap into it? We do appropriate against it, so if we do appropriate against it, will we be able to indicate it here, since we're talking about the government one budget? What is the balance of that trust?
I don't know. I mean, I'll, I think he's talking about the tobacco settlement funds.
No, you were saying that there was a, you mentioned a trust fund that's separate.
That's the tobacco settlement. This one is the local...
Okay, so that's separate, that's a federal?
No. Point of information, I guess, if I could just shed some light on the, the tobacco settlement trust funds was a settlement that the state attorneys general entered into, and we, they spread out a payment for the damages caused to tobacco smoking with, between themselves and the tobacco. Guam was supposed to get a revenue stream over twenty-five years, I believe. And what we did, Dave, was we sold that, we collateralized that, sold it and got all our cash upfront, and then we appropriated the money to public health, some public education, tobacco cessation programs, tobacco education programs, University of Guam, GCC, mental health and public health, and those are, they're program funds there. In addition, we spent half the money, and the other half, we set up trust funds at the University of Guam, at GCC, and mental health, and then the interest on those trust funds are now used to support the programs meant to be supported by the settlement, public education on smoking and so forth, and those are not, and those are used and appropriated separately from the general fund.
So, we still, we still need to come to the body?
Yes.
To be able to get to that trust fund to...
That's correct.
Appropriate that out, so that's, okay.
That's correct.
And this one here, though, is the Healthy Future Fund.
This is the tax.
Local tax.
Alcohol tax, tobacco tax, locally imposed.
Okay, so then, that's what we have. We're projecting ten million, what, point six in terms of the Healthy Future Funds, and that, that again, is still subject to... And that is still subject to the, subject to the appropriation aspects, or is it tied in? Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Speaker? Oh, I'm sorry. Senator Wapet?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On line twenty-two for M. Judiciary Building Fund, can you explain to me why do we have twenty thousand only in the fund, and I thought that, or for what period of time is this for? And this, or does this exist as of March? I mean, I don't understand why it's only twenty thousand. Are these just only the recent tickets that's been issued?
Like I said, we didn't touch any of the special fund revenues. I'll compare that against the original bill. I think that was in the original bill, twenty thousand. It does seem small. It does seem small. Yeah. Yeah, I think it, yeah, it looked like it might have.
Been $2 million rather than $20,000.
It's either 20, I'll look at the original bill. Yeah, maybe, but the comma would have been correct if it was $2 million.
Okay, we'll take one minute recess. You recognize your previous question?
Uh, yes, Mr. Speaker, thank, I mean, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. But I think my colleague here, the chairman, had answered my question, yes, so I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Speaker Forbes? Okay, on the, we're, okay, we're still on special funds. Any questions in regards to the special funds and the different sections of special funds? Discussions? Senator Guthers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the section that deals with the 911 Emergency Reporting System Fund, has that money actually reached the 911 entity? Is it still under the fire department and have they received all the money from that fund for operating the 911 system?
I apologize, Senator, I can't answer that question right now, but Lou will be back in about 15 minutes.
Okay. The reason I ask is because I have heard from the fire, firefighters that work in the dispatch area, that that has not happened. And if you know, I recall when this fund was first established, the purpose was tried to, was to try to move from the uniformed personnel to civilian dispatchers and in order to conserve uniformed personnel for, you know, their primary mission. And in the course of inquiring about it, when speaking to the firefighters, my understanding is the 911 monies have not all gotten to the, to the program. Also, Mr. Chairman, on the Judiciary Building Fund, now I know this has been refinanced, correct? We've seen a refinancing of the judicial loan for its building in order to help finance the construction of the crime lab of the Guam Police Department. But my question is, has, does anyone know, Mr. Loggins or Mr. Delarosa, if a final location has been determined for the crime lab? Will it be at GCC or UOG?
I believe the, the location they were discussing was somewhere in Dedado.
Neither at GCC or UOG? For the crime, new crime lab?
Then I'm not sure. I'll get that information for you.
You know, I just want to make a couple comments on that. This construction of a crime lab for the Guam Police Department is something that started in 1996, 97. There were discussions that were held at that time between the University of Guam and the Guam Police Department. The Guam Police Department was interested, Mr. Chairman, in establishing the crime lab within the University of Guam campus. The area opposite the Health Science Building on the main road to the university, land was identified for the crime lab. The reason that happened was because the police department was interested in, of course, the crime lab, but also incorporating in their proposed physical structure, learning rooms, including forensic laboratories and classrooms, so that students at the University of Guam who were majoring in chemistry and biology, the other fiscal sciences, students majoring in psychology, criminal justice, could learn about forensics in an applied fashion, working with the Guam Police Department crime lab personnel, interning with them. It was also going to be a facility that would allow the Guam Police Department to hold regional training through the Federal Bureau of Investigations Institute that it takes all over the world, always looking for a location to train police officers onsite. The Drug Enforcement Administration and other federal law enforcement agencies to actually conduct their training programs here at the crime lab facility, because it would have classroom, classrooms built as part of the facility. Although some preliminary work was done, there were some changes at the university and also a bill came later which sort of changed the location and so forth. And I'd just like to bring this forth for, for information of everybody that the crime lab should be at one of the educational institutions, either GCC or UOG, and there should be a joint educational component of the crime lab to service students at GCC who are criminal justice majors, for example, and students at the university who are majoring in the sciences, fiscal sciences, as well as the social related sciences. And it should include a portion of the facility that could accommodate regional training by the FBI, the DEA and all these groups. And I don't know if that has been incorporated into the present plan. One advantage of the university being involved is, you know, the university has a wonderful computer center with highly trained technical personnel. The Guam Police Department has technical equipment in their forensics area, their crime lab area, including their fingerprinting, electronic fingerprinting machines, computers, et cetera, et cetera, used for diagnosing evidence. They need to be able to keep that equipment. The university could be helpful in that regard through its computer center. And there's other aspects of the university that could have been helpful. I just wonder if we, maybe this is not the right form for it, but I think we need to look at this again to make sure that the crime lab is built in a location that will maximize the educational component and maximize the expertise and resources that are at the university and GCC that can help the Guam Police Department. Thank you.
Senator, just to clarify, it is being surveyed right now up in the location near GCC? The land up near GCC?
It's actually, it's going to be there then?
Correct.
Senator Ben?
Yeah, just to update you, Senator Guthers, that was all discussed when, there was a debate on the location in here and there were advocates from both sides and so forth. The body rejected the proposal to place it at the University of Guam.
Mr. Chairman, can I just inquire?
Senator Guthers?
Was there at least an agreement that there would be an educational area within the facility so that students, both at GCC and UOG, who are majoring in fields that relate to forensic science and relate to, you know, crime lab activities, so that they can learn and be part of the, you know, the investigative process? As well as to accommodate regional or national law enforcement organizations that would like to conduct training here? Because this is, this is something that ties in really well with that facility, or should at least.
Thank you, Senator Guthers. Senator Wampet?
I just wanted to know whether Mr. Loggins was able to get the answers for the license and fees and permits?
When I was talking to Lou, there seems to be a lot, she said, she said, there seems to be a lot of erratic movement of cash through the month. She said it's probably because when the cashers receive the payments, it's not classified and they have to go back and reclassify them. It's, it's just, you know, in one category it goes up and the other category goes down. It's just a movement of transactions.
I understand, but, but my question now would be, like, for example, if you look at even the month of April, $4,000 as a collection there versus last year, it was $57,000. I mean, I realize that these are projections, so my question is, is what is happening in the month of April to make a projection that low? When the collections, the lowest collection in previous years, if you look at it historically, was $31,000 for the month of April? No matter what year it is, and we're looking at almost, you know, eight years here? I mean, nine years. And then if you look at the projection for July, and last year was $309,000, and the projection to collect in July for this year is only $82,000? And then historically, the lowest amount is $180,000? So I mean, we're always, for all nine years in the past, historically, we've always been in a six-digit figure and now we're only, for this year as a projection, only five?
We can wait for Lou to come, because that's, seems like a accounting function that she, that's her explanation was reclassification of the numbers that come in.
Would you know though, because the licenses, they would have to come to you, to your department, right?
They renew it, the function is in my office, but the cash is over at the away.
You're right, but what I'm saying then, what normally happens then at any one of these times? Like, for example, let's take June. So in June, then, does that mean that that is the date in which all licenses will be renewed?
Business license.
Business licenses, you're right. So, so that would explain then for June, and the numbers here are very close, so, so June would be for a business license and that's why the numbers are high. But for the other months, do you know if anything else is going on in any other time of the year? Is that the only? I mean, I understand driver's licenses, that can be any time. Summertime, maybe a lot of it might occur because then the children are out of school and that would be an opportunity to come in, but, but that's in June, but it doesn't even show that, it's not reflected in, in July or August. And what happens then in November and December for the government to be able to collect $133,000 in November and $129 in December? What was going on there? Because if you look in December, actually for one, two, three, four, five years, six years, the numbers were always only like between $31,000 to $45,000. But prior to that, to those years, they were in the hundreds of thousands.
Senator, could we wait for Lou? Yeah.
So I mean, I'm just trying to get an idea of what's going on. Is there a seasonal renewal of any licenses or fees or permits at that particular time that could explain the numbers? Already we've established, at least in June, that that's the renewal for business licenses and so we can understand that. But for the other months, I'm looking to you to tell us if there's anything going on.
Purchases of cars, stuff like that, it's based on, I guess, what consumers are willing to spend. They may, I can't see any except for Jan, for June.
Okay, so there's nothing else then? Did anything happen last November and December? Do you know?
Was it? Yes, Tola? I don't know. Maybe they bought cars? I have no idea.
For licenses and fees, permits, okay. So that's the only thing then that you can think of?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Wampet. Senator Pangolino?
Yes, Mr. Chair. You know, Mr. Chair, I just, I'd just like to request from the administration to just, as we go, continue to go through the bill and they look at these numbers again, that they just reexamine some of the special funds, really, because if we are seeing some changes in activity on, on the GRT, for example, even if a 2% growth, you know, that's a reflection of retail activity. And some of the items in here, for example, most especially the Healthy Futures Fund, is a reflection of retail activity also because of the fact that the items that are taxed are, you know, are sold on the retail level. So I would just like to just ask for, you know, just a reexamination. I know you didn't focus on these numbers, I think, when you were reviewing the changes, but I think it just makes, it's, it'll just be good, I think, that we kind of refocus on that just for, for as much as we can and with the time we have to look at these things and see whether those areas here that are reflective of retail activity could also be reexamined and maybe adjustments, up or down, whatever it is, to kind of remain consistent with some of the assumptions that are made that need, reflected or drove a need to reflect some changes in the other revenue categories on the tax side. Okay? So building permits and things like that, Healthy Futures, tobacco and alcohol, land survey revolving fund, reflection of building permits issued maybe, you know, and so forth. So just, I just think it makes sense that we just devote a little bit more time to look at these numbers and see whether adjustments also are merited in these areas. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangolino. Again, on special fund revenues, Senator Guthers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have some questions for specific areas within the special fund category. On the Chamorro Land Trust Operations Fund, recently, the public auditor expressed serious concern about how the funds that are generated by the Chamorro Land Trust are being managed. And she indicated that this is one among a number of other government instrumentalities that have their own bank accounts and checking accounts and so forth and so on. Now, am I right, Mr. Loggins, that the Chamorro Land Trust is a beneficiary or supposedly is a beneficiary of the Raceway Park activity? And also similar activities?
I don't know.
You're not sure?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Is your agency monitoring how the tax exemptions that have been extended to the Guam Raceway Park?
Yes.
And other similar entities are being implemented?
What we take care of is the certification that we get from GetCA. And when we see that certification, we allow the rebates to go to the taxpayers. That's all we do. We don't monitor what funds are... We don't monitor what funds are, are, um, paid to what agencies or, that, that's DOA, I believe.
The reason I bring this up is I understand that, uh, in the lease to the, uh, nonprofit Raceway Park Organization, there's a provision that allows them to mine coral and other materials and resell it to island businesses such as Hawaiian Rock and Perez Brothers. And I have serious concerns about that allowance because this is property, it's under the Chamorro Land Trust, but we have a private so-called nonprofit organization operating the Raceway Park, digging, doing things, and selling the material to private businesses. Are you aware of that?
Not the mining part.
Yeah, well, when I mean mining, I mean, you know, taking the, the material and reselling it.
I, I don't know anything about that part.
Okay.
Actually, all we do with the nonprofit or, or these, um, um, GetCA recipients of these things is make sure that we, uh, that they're certified, that they're properly, uh, doing what they're supposed to be doing, and then we allow the rebate. Uh, we may look into, depending on issues, like you're saying, um, profits being made and somebody inhering the profits and not the, we may look into those things.
Okay. My understanding is that's part of the agreement, the lease agreement, that allows them to do that. They might share a portion of it with the government, I'm not sure, but is it fifty-fifty? I still have problems with that. Uh, and I hope you look at it, check it out, but another area that concerns me is, um, the Section T, the School Lunch, uh, Child Nutrition Meal Reimbursement Fund, that's supposed to generate about sixty-five or six million five hundred thousand dollars. I, uh, I know that many of the cafeterias at the schools have been so-called privatized. I know that the Guam Public School System is paying a big price for that. I'm wondering whether, um, Mr. Loggins, your office would think it appropriate, and also Mr. Del Ros on behalf of the Governor, don't you think that we should look at this contract? Because it's costing the government of Guam money. Uh, the government of Guam is paying for the power bills, government of Guam is paying for the water, all these other things at the schools that the private vendor is using. Uh, my understanding of, uh, an arrangement such as a private entity handling the cafeterias is that, you know, they should actually be paying the government for the privilege of doing that, rather than we paying them for doing it. Sort of, I look, I look at it as sort of a privatization initiative that's backward. I know my friends who speak Tagalog will say, "It's baliktat, it's backward." Instead of the government losing money, the government should be generating revenue from this arrangement. Your office has nothing to do with that?
When we first started, we, that, that seems like a GPSS, uh, function, and when we first started back four years ago, we wanted to get our auditing, I, I mean, our, our financial, um, accounts similar to theirs, or theirs similar to ours, they oppose, they oppose a lot of things, they want it to do things. The Governor has no authority over GPSS at the moment, so we can't just go in there and, "Let me see your cafeteria contracts" and make sure you make it.
But, but this legislature can certainly look at that, and, uh, I would hope, at least, Mr. Chairman, that, uh, I would like to look at that because if we're going to, uh, partner out or privatize certain government activities, then the government should generate some revenue for, from that and not have to spend money for it. Uh, the Streetlight Fund, uh, according to the figures here, it's supposed to generate about three million nine hundred and twelve thousand dollars, et cetera, close to four million dollars. Now, I heard last night that, uh, the Public Works owes Guam Power Authority approximately sixty million dollars for back streetlight bills. Are you familiar with that at all, Mr. Loggins?
I think that was, uh, a liability, I, I think it's thirteen or fourteen million dollars that we owe for streetlights that were put up at one point and not paid by the government. Um, the monies that are coming in from, from the fees that are assessed on taxpayers, I, I don't even think that's enough to fund the, the annual, uh, charges for streetlights.
Okay.
It's short.
It's, it's quite interesting because I, what I heard on television last night was a different figure, but regardless of that, has any money at all been paid? Does anyone know, Lou, has any money at all been paid to the Guam Power Authority for streetlights?
Uh, during, for the normal, for example, monthly, uh, streetlight, uh, billings, yes, but I, uh, there is that amount that is part of the, uh, bond bill for prior year streetlights.
I see, so that was going to-
I think that's that thirteen million.
I see, okay. All right, now, the Tourist Attraction Fund, you're estimating that that will generate about twenty-three million dollars. Does that take into account the, uh, ebbs and flows of what we're seeing right now in terms of tourists visiting the island? We're seeing sort of a downturn right now? Was that taken into consideration?
Those numbers, um, uh, they, they have not been adjusted for anything. We, we just zeroed in on the general fund appropriations.
I see, okay.
So those are the original, uh, special fund amounts adopted, uh, by the Twenty-Eighth Form Legislature.
Okay. I'm kind of concerned, uh, because the latest information that has come out of the Guam Visitors Bureau, published very recently, is that they're seeing a reduction in their projected tourists to the island, and that may, they may impact this number downward. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So, yeah, it's, it's less than what they originally had, uh, predicted and what is originally included in the two thousand seven seven projections. Well, I, I, I'm wondering if the, uh, special fund revenue total that's here, a hundred and three million, two oh six, four oh nine, is realistic based on some of these points, and whether we have to reduce it? What would be your comment, Mr. Loggins and Ms. Perez?
Uh, like I said, we, we, uh, in this re, revised budget, uh, we saw that, uh, where we, we were suggesting amendments were to the general fund appropriations, and we did not take a look into the, uh, the special fund revenues, um, in, is, in, to, to try to respond to your question on the TAF, the Tourist Attraction Funds, um, that fund basically, you know, it, it goes to paid debt service and then the balance goes to GVB operations and, and other appropriations against it. If revenues are not fully realized, then all of those appropriations will not be funded. It basically just lapses.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. That's, that's all for me at this point.
Okay. Thank you very much Senator Guthers. Again, we're on revenues. Senior Senator Pinco?
If, if I were to be repetitive, oh, please, uh, excuse me, um, on the, um, RTB, was that asked already? The Interim Transition Coordinating Committee Fund?
No, oh, no, Mr. Speaker, you're all areas.
Is this part of what was in the paper today about that office might be closing next month? It's, uh, maybe Lou, you can answer that?
I, I-
You know, I'm, I'm talking about line twenty, twenty-one of Bates Four.
Yes, um, if, if my memory serves me correct, um, that, normally that fund does pay for the, uh, office, for the staff office.
Right, uh-huh.
Yes.
And so, is that the, is, is there gonna be a real move to actually close that office, so by, by April?
I, I can't speak to that. I know that when it was created, there was a, a, um, some language in the law that allowed it to operate for X number of years or months, uh, until all of the, um, I, I don't recall the details, but there were still some outstanding, uh, either settlements or payments.
Maybe we, if I can get some feedback on that. Yeah, I understand where.
Okay, your, your question is, when do we plan to close it?
Uh, yes, and, uh, really, how much money do we have there? Or is this one point eight, uh, will be diminishing or will be rising?
I would think if, if these, uh, some operations, uh, were appropriated against it, then it would be going down.
Yeah, I think, uh, Mr. Speaker, if I may just set some light on that, Mr. Chair.
Would you care to, Senator Pangolinan?
Yeah, we looked into this matter, and I'm, I'm a little bit familiar with it. Um, but that, that money really is, is an interfund, uh, transfer of, of those amounts, and there really is no more, very little cash left in that account. Uh, but they do have staff, and the staff are being paid. So that one point eight, I think, is really not reflective of the true cash position of that fund. Um, so...
Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, the other question I have is, um, okay, on the special fund revenues that we have here, are we ming-, intermingling some of the federal funds here? Like, oh, it was mentioned earlier on item, I see line thirty, thirty-one, we have GPSS, but that's part federally, right? Or this whole local funds? And on line seventeen, you go on, you have the Guam Highway Fund. Is that federal or is that local?
These are the local portions.
The local portion, um-
These are local funds. Uh, there is a section on the third page that, um, uh, shows the, uh... Oh, no, that just shows the local match, the matching local for the federal programs.
Okay, the last question I have is on item M, line twenty-two. Uh, Judiciary, Judiciary Building Fund, twenty thousand dollars only? I, I thought that, that, you know, every, all the fines and all the ticket, tickets that have been issued are a rest or, you know, goes into this, uh, special fund for the Judiciary Building Fund.
Yeah, yeah, that was just an appropriation from that fund and-
Twenty thousand?
Yeah, we confirmed that that's what it was in the original budget law.
But wouldn't that be much higher because, you know, police officers are giving tickets practically every minute right now, all over the island, and it's going into the judiciary of-
Yeah, that was the, uh, balance that was identified for purposes of appropriating in, in this, uh, the, the budget that was passed in the Twenty-Eighth Form Legislature.
Okay, so we're not taking into consideration the total amount actually collected then for the entire, uh, this school?
It doesn't look like it. I mean, look at the-
No, it doesn't look, uh, you know, because twenty thousand dollars, wow, that's, and they're giving tickets, in fact, I just passed through Marine Drive, and there were two people that got tickets, and I'm sure that, that probably will go up to maybe no less than fifty bucks. And so, for twenty thousand dollars, I think, I think that revenue probably could be readjusted up on, on the outward balance, right, to maybe a hundred thousand? Five hundred thousand? Can, can you check on it, Lou? This, okay, uh, okay, thanks. Okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senior Senator. Uh, Senator Pangolinan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I just wanted to, to make a comment, I guess, that the body needs to think about, uh, with regards to the School Lunch, uh, Child Nutrition Meal Reimbursement Fund. Uh, as you know, Mr. Chair, that's the fund that is reimbursed to the government of Guam for the provision of the free lunch, uh, program at the schools. The, um, and so that's, that's really the, uh, the federal share of that free lunch. The, uh, the problem that, uh, that is created for the Guam Public School System is that this is pegged at a, something like a two dollar and thirty-three cent, uh, reimbursement per meal per child. The, uh, the problem that the Guam Public School System has is that the cost of providing that meal is three dollars and fifty cents. So there's a short for those meals that the school, GPSS, has to pay to reflect the true cost of the meals over and above the reimbursed cost by the, uh, by the federal government. But there's no appropriation specific to that. So in effect, the appropriation to the Guam Public School System does not reflect about a million dollars, or actually more than a million dollars a year, that they have to, to shell out to pay for the lunch programs, uh, over and above what is reimbursed to them by the feds. So when we look at the GPSS budget, I think we've got to consider that shortfall that, and at least the appropriation levels that is created by the lower reimbursement factor that the feds use versus the true cost of providing that meal.
Uh, thank you very much Senator Pangolinan. We're on revenues. Special fund revenue.
The, this, uh, the Speaker, Mr. Chairman, just clarified to me that as far as the Judiciary Building Fund, that was the amount that was approp-, um, appropriated, um, by Senator Wampit earlier, um, and, you know, from the Judiciary Fund for some purpose, and so I guess they just put it in there. Uh, so Lou, you don't have to come back to me on that. Okay, thank you. Um...
We're still in special fund revenues.
Um, I don't have any question, thank you.
Okay, uh, okay, total special fund revenues?
Just one, another thing.
Oh, sure, continue.
Page five, line two, Tourist Attraction Fund. Um, from, you know, the information I received, it's that it's tracking less than two million dollars, I think, so, uh, we're talking about maybe around twenty-one million dollars, one hundred, and, um, there's a request that, oh, perhaps the, somebody from, um, uh, you know, uh, let's see, art, we talked about it earlier regarding maybe having a audit made in terms of, uh, the amount that's been collected on this thing, because, um, at one time, I understand that we do not, we, we have not reconciled your office, collection versus even the administration versus also the administrat-, the, uh, Guam Hotel Restaurant Association. And so, the only way we can reconcile this is to actually, um, probably do a special audit and, uh, because there's a lot, I heard that there's, there's a lot of manipulation right now in terms of the, um, the TAF. Maybe you can expound on that more?
We spoke about this, and I think there was even an appropriation or some monies or a system where, uh, somebody from, um, GVB can help us with the audit, because my staff is, um, was fairly new at the time, um, and plus I don't have enough staff, and plus the funds that are generated from the staff goes to, uh, the, the TAF, and, um, we didn't have enough staff to take care of, of, of what, what, what we needed to do in the, uh, TAF fund. Um, there seems to be a decline, maybe because of the way, um, uh, the, the group that, um, brings in tourists into Guam feels that the package they sell to their, um, customers includes the restaurant, the picnic area, the beach, the pools. So they started subtracting that from the, uh, hotel, um, taxes that are, that are at eleven percent. They're saying this is for the, this, this market value of the food, we should subtract the market value for the, uh, the pools and, and, um, their areas that they use, the gym, if they have a gym, should not be part of the hotel occupancy tax. So maybe they're, they're starting to, uh, the industry is probably starting to, um... I guess, find that out and use that in their accounting system to deduct.
I guess they're doing a lot of crazy, creative accounting, right? To avoid paying the TAF, because, yeah, they're, they're saying that they, at one time, that they're collecting, paying a room, you know, for $70 or more, and it has gone up because they raised the room rate. But now what they were doing is that they're actually dividing this thing, like you said, like a package deal for busing, for tour, then they, you know, give that certain amount, so that lowers the tax. Then they said that they, they will, that part of this is for their meal, you know, in the morning. So they subtracted that again. And so, and so, and so a lot of other charges, so that when it shows in terms of the TAF, the gross, you know, the, the amount to be charged net after deduction will probably be maybe around $40, $30, right?
Right.
And so that's where they pay the, the TAF tax, the Tourist Attraction Fund, yeah.
They, they may, they may have a valid argument in, in what they're saying. And, you know, they want to say that only the hotel side should be taxed for that hotel occupancy tax. So maybe the law needs to be more clarified.
Maybe what we can do is to have somebody in their sort of room, just have, just go for a room and do not want to go on any tour, and we're not, go for any breakfast, and just see how much, you know, is the actual, actual room rate? Because, yeah, they're manipulating right now the, you know, the amount they're charging per room. And I think it's very important that we do have a special auditor that actually know what to look as far as how they, they, you know, do their books. So perhaps the GHRA, as well as the Guam Visitors Bureau, you know, and the revenue and tax that, you know, because you're doing the collection of this, should get together and sort of set up a strategy as to how this thing will be settled and audited. Okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Pico. Senator Frank Blas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Arden and Lou, thank you very much as well. And I don't know whether this question has been asked and answered previously earlier. If it has, I apologize. Going back to item E, in special fund revenues, Enhanced 911 Emergency Reporting System Fund. I know that at one point in time, we were having some, there was some difficulty in basically the methodology that was used to be able to collect this fund appropriately. Are we up to date within, as far as collecting the amounts that the carriers are supposed to be paying into this fund? Or have we resolved how, the methodology that was used for this? And is this the figure?
That, that particular figure was the revenue adopted based on public law 28, either 149 or 150. I, I never was personally involved in those meetings concerning the collection of these. I know that the Public Utilities Commission is, is, is very much involved or looking into this to make sure that all the carriers pay what, what is due to this fund. Because it comes from, I believe it's assessed on, on the communications companies?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so is it safe to say that this is probably then a very conservative figure that could be collected?
You know, I, I can't say, but it won't, I could make a quick call to find out where we are on that one, and I can report to that.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Blas. Again, we are on special fund revenues. Okay, if there's no other comments or question on special fund revenues, we are now on federal matching grants and aid, federal grants and aid requiring local match. Oh, Senator Frank Blas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Lou and Arden, again, I don't know whether this is actually, you know, you, you two are the best individuals that can best answer this. And I'm looking at these, the, the number of different entities that receive these federal grants and aids and then, and that also require the local match for this. But the one, I guess, function, if you will, for lack of a better term, the one program that I, I know that still exists and continues to exist because we, we're still dealing with the disasters is the Recovery Office. And the match that's required, if I remember correctly, depending on which disaster it is, you know, there's a 90-10 or a 75-25 match requirement. And I don't see that here.
I think you will find it, if, if we're thinking along the same lines, it may be found further into the revised bill.
Okay.
There is, I know, a section. Let me double check, because I'm thinking of Military Affairs, and you're thinking about the Recovery Office, which is an office of the governor.
Right.
Yeah, so that's where you would find the, the general fund portion required.
Okay, I just wanted to bring that up because I know that that exists. And if you can find that, Lou, for me? Okay? Thanks, Lou. I, I'm sorry that I'm giving you homework. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. Senior Senator Pico?
Yes, on the Military Affairs, so the 839-150 here. Is that for an appropriation or is that a revenue or what? Is that the local matching that will be appropriated? Or is that reimbursement from the federal government?
Yeah, the language here is the... Let me look at the way, the, I'll look at one page of the budget bill, and that would confirm that that's the way I understand this. Because I, I know, like, for the, the federal side definitely does not require an appropriation, but the local match does. So if this is the local match, then yes, this requires an appropriation.
Because if, if this is going to be a local match, that means that, you know, their appropriation will be a lot more than what was...
I take it back, it's the federal. This is just a, an authorization. This is that authorization to, to, to accept these grants in a certain extent?
Yeah. The, these are, these are a reflection of the federal funds we receive for these programs, if I, if I'm correct, Mr. Speaker. Because, for example, like the Public Health and Social Services, that 22 million is, is for medic, food stamps, Medicare, Medicaid, federal funds that we receive for those programs.
So this is like a reimbursement back to the...
No, no, these are the federal program.
These are the federal funds for, for the program.
And is, is this supposed to be the local fund? Or is that...
No, this is the federal fund.
Federal funding, the 839-150?
Yes.
And then, so whatever they have right now for their appropriation will be the matching or part of it?
That's right. You'll find the general fund share in, under the department's general fund appropriation.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much, Senior Senator. Again, we are in federal matching grants and aid. Okay, no other comments and discussions, no other comments and discussions in revenues, no proposed amendments. So let's move along to chapter three. I'm, I'm sorry.
No, Mr. Chair, I, I know that we said that upon engrossment, that we will total these numbers.
Yes.
But perhaps just a couple of changes that were made with, that were reflective, maybe we can just get, just a, a total for ourselves, maybe the office staff or even the clerks can, you know, just...
Again, I'll, I'll make a request to the, to the clerks for all the amendments and changes in the subtotals if we can, if maybe can be, if it can be printed out for the, for the body later on today. Okay, thank you very much, Senator Pangolinan. Senator Blas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And so along the lines with, on Senator Pangolinan's request, a good senator from Baragota. Just for our edification here, and I apologize for, for, for being a little late here. The total special fund revenue then, the, the figure here that, assuming that nothing has been changed, still remains at $103,206,409? Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mrs., yes, Senator, yes.
All right. And then the grant, the, so the grant total, somebody's working on that right now, right?
Yes, and, and we'll make sure to have the clerk's office work with, with the legal counsel and with OB to verify the, the changes and amendments. Okay, thank you very much. If there's no other comments or questions in regards to the revenue side, we'll move along to chapter three. Obviously, I take a couple of minute recess. So since we are going to be going into education, I notice in, in the gallery, some representatives from the University of Guam, so I'm going to take a couple of minute recess to, to bring some folks in here. The committee that holds back, back in order. Speaker Forbes, you recognize?
Thank you very much. We are now in chapter three, as I understand it. And the first section of chapter three, oh, incidentally, chapter three deals exclusively with educational institutions. And I think all of them are pretty much represented in chapter three in terms of changes except for GPSS. I do have some questions to ask with respect to GPSS, however, the folks from the administration are not here at particular moments, so I'll wait until they return. I also have some questions to ask the administration with respect to the appropriations to UOG and the other things, but I'll reserve those until the administration is here so they can respond to those. What I would like to ask the University of Guam at this time, I want to thank Dr. Allen and my good friend, Mr. O'Brien over there, for coming today. As I read this, basically what there is, is a more or less $600,000 deappropriation being recommended by the Governor's Office for the University of Guam. Is, am I reading it accurately? Yeah, 616. The obvious and first question to ask is to you, since I can't ask anyone else how this was arrived at, I'm going to ask you, will the effect of the reduction of your appropriation level by $616,000 cause any erosion of services for the balance of the fiscal year? Will it, what, what direct, I'm not talking about indirect, long-term or anything, but what direct consequences will the loss of $616,000 to your, to your appropriation level? Not talking about cash, just your appropriation level. What, what effect will that have on the University of Guam directly?
Well, I'd like to make a couple of comments. One is, the university last fall, I believe in September, instituted a variety of austerity measures. Our concern, obviously, has been with protecting the cost of education and protecting the quality of our programs. In dealing with austerity measures, we have eliminated searches, delayed searches. We have an unbelievably large accrued vendor total. Anything we could delay or put off or substitute, we did. Has it had a direct impact on student learning? Probably at some level, but we've made every effort to protect student learning in the process. With a 2.5% reduction in the general fund appropriation, it certainly will have an impact, but I think at the same time, I would add that the university understands the island to be in a difficult situation fiscally, and we are doing our very best to work with the administration and internally to cope with it. But it certainly will have an impact. I think the, the end of my comment is that when we put together the FY07 budget request, we did so in a very consultative way across the campus. It was a very thorough process. We understood already at that time that the island's fiscal situation was complex, and what we requested is what we really do need to run, manage, and operate the university. David, would you like to add to that?
All right, then let me ask the question this way. Are you in agreement with this reduction of 616,000? Are you in agreement with this reduction?
We don't, we don't really want any reduction, but we will work.
Let me ask you this, then. It is in our power to restore the $616,000 to you. As the Oversight Chair for Education, it is my inclination to do so. So I am asking you directly, Mr. President, would you like the legislature to restore the $616,000 to your appropriation that has been removed?
It's a hard question for me to answer directly, because we've had the austerity program in place since September.
Understood. I'm just asking if, all we're talking about here, I'm not talking about your program, I'm not talking about the effects it has. Actually, this is kind of a weird discussion because you are so far behind in terms of cash, and I understand that. But, but what I have in front of me right now is a section that reduces your budget by $616,000. And so the direct question I need to ask you, without getting, I mean, I'm sure Senator Calvo's going to have a wonderful conversation with you about cash and all those good things. But what I need to ask you, as your Oversight Chair, who is here to support the university and to support the programs of the university, is I need your guidance. Because what I don't want, Harold, is to sit here and allow this to happen, and then have anybody come back and say, you know, Speaker, you should have restored that $616,000 in the University of Guam. So I need to ask the question directly, and I need a direct answer. It is within the power of this body to change that number and put the $616,000 back. If you don't, if you, if you, if you, if you don't think we should do it because you believe that there's a greater problem here that we're trying to solve, if you don't think we should do it because you think you're okay, if you don't think we should do it because you don't expect to get that anyway because you don't think you're going to get 100% of your cash by the end of the fiscal year, that's okay. I'm, I'm not using this to trap you or anything. I just want a clear, absolute, clear direction from the University of Guam to guide me about what I should do.
Mr. Speaker, while I share the, the President's sentiments, I believe we can manage to the $616,000 and, and as much as that goes to the overall solution that the island needs to, to live within its means, I think that's a, it's a fair amount for the university. I believe, as you have just said, that the bigger issue, as, as many times discussed with this body, the Vice Speaker yourself, is the cash issue, and I think that's, that's really where the question is.
So I just want to be clear, the university is not looking to me or asking me to restore the $616,000.
No, we're not.
Okay, thank you.
Senator Shemazov?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. President, Dave, welcome. Just a quick question. With the reduction of $615,000, would that impact on accreditation? Not having the adequate funding to carry out the mandates of the programs that you have up there? Is that a concern of WASD?
I don't think it's a major concern for us. We have had the austerity program in place. It was in place when the WASD team visited. We explained why we were doing it, how we were coping with the shortfall, and I think we will continue to meet accreditation standards.
Okay, so what you're saying now with the reduction, it would not have any way impact on the accreditation status in terms of the, the government giving the university the financial...
inability to plan, because we don't have a regular fund disbursement program in place that can allow us to do so.
So, in other words, what I'm hearing you say, that it's not the appropriation that they're concerned about, it's the release of the core cash to be able to carry it out. So, in essence, if you're saying that the, if this governor was able to release the allotments on time, you can live without the 615,000?
That's absolutely correct.
It will not impact the University of Guam if your budget is reduced 615,000 if you are able to get all of the releases on time?
It'll have some impact.
Maybe you can share that with me.
Obviously, any amount of reduction will have some impact, but will it have a significant effect on student learning or the university's productivity? I don't think so.
Okay, where would that impact, the 615, where would you have to make your adjustments on your overall appropriations?
Thank you, Senator. I think the major impact that we'll feel, we've already felt some impacts already, because we haven't been able to proceed with some of the hiring we've needed to do for some critical positions, so that impact is already there. I think that the big impact, if I look at 616,000 out of our budget, will probably be on the initiatives that we were trying to implement and the progress that we were trying to make on the IT side, where we were trying to increase the, you know, the use of computing and to upgrade our servers, to upgrade our IT infrastructure, those are critical areas for us, and I think those will suffer and have suffered already, but I think that's probably where we'll have to take it.
That's where you probably have to take the major cut of the 615, because if they remove that appropriation, even if the cash flows were going out, and then you're still short because you don't have the appropriation, so you would look at the IT area in terms of, is that going to be an issue with the WASC? Or are those new initiatives?
No, they certainly, they are relatively new initiatives, and we thank the legislature because this was one of the years where, in fact, that the appropriation that we received, much of it went directly towards IT. But I believe that WASC view is, is that certainly, if you look at education generally, in terms of both distance education and the ability to enhance learning through technology, it's an area they're concerned about, they see us falling behind more and more as time goes forward, so they're very anxious for us to make those investments and to do what's necessary on the IT side.
Okay, one more thing in terms of, so it's mostly towards the IT, you don't see it impacting things like a program that is close to my heart, you know, the Teacher Corps, the Yamashita Corps, because we have a need for more and more teachers, so you don't see any of that being programmatically impacted?
No, we're going to, we'll do whatever it takes to protect that program, that program's vital to us and to GPSS.
Okay, good, thank you.
Senator Guthers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Allen and Mr. O'Brien, can you tell us, as of today, how much of the allotment monies are owed to the university for this fiscal year?
Yes, Senator. As of today, if you look at all of the funding we received, not just the general fund, if you look at all of the funding, we are still owed for this year 7.8 million.
Seven point eight million dollars?
Right, just to give you a quick statistic, we are about 52% of our requested allotment, but in terms of our overall allotment, it's still about 25%, which is where we were generally just a bit of time ago.
Okay. Now, the reason I ask is because the Governor's proposed reduction for the university of 616,000 may not sound like a lot of money if you were to receive all of the other money that's due you. Has the Governor or his representatives assured you that you will receive all of your allotted funds minus the 616,000?
No, they haven't.
They have not? And what is your gut feeling at this point? Do you think, without having spoken to the Governor or his official representatives, that you will in fact receive everything that's due to you, perhaps minus the 616,000, by the end of the fiscal year?
Personally, I believe, you know, from what I know and have observed, that it's going to be necessary to carry out the process that we're under now. It's going to take some combination of cost containment, some revenue enhancements, wherever they might be, and some, you know, on the cash side, some line of credit or something like a line of credit, for us to be able to receive all of the monies except for the 616,000. I mean, we are so far behind now, I believe that the proof in the pudding, if you will, is where this body and the Governor's Office get to in regards to the cash projections and their monthly ability to prove out the deliberations and the negotiations that have taken place so far.
My concern, Mr. O'Brien, is that you will not in fact get your authorized allotments, and if we were to approve this reduction in the university's budget by 616,000, that would in fact further aggravate your financial situation, should you not receive the allotments that were approved by this legislature, meaning your budget that was approved by this legislature. Don't you have that concern or that apprehension?
Absolutely have that concern, Senator, and I think it's a good one. You know, as we answered a minute ago to Speaker Forbes, and we've discussed with many here, the cash side of it is our bigger concern at this point in time. I mean, to be at only 26 or 25% of our overall appropriation payment for the year, when we should be at about 50 or thereabouts, that has such a huge impact on us that, you know, looking at the 2.5% pales in comparison, you know, we believe the overall issue is both balancing the budget issue as well as doing the cash. So, if that answers your question, I hope it does.
Mr. President?
My comment is virtually identical. I think if there's any likelihood that we will not receive the remaining full appropriation for FYO seven, the loss of an additional 616,000 will aggravate the situation and make it very untenable.
Right. And with that, I hope I would not disappoint you if I say that, as a member of this legislature, I appreciate your willingness for the university to do its part, to support the initiative of the Governor. However, I hope that you will not be disappointed with me if I would move to restore the 616,000 in this proposal, because I feel that we have no guarantee, we have no way of knowing whether or not you will receive the allotments that you should receive. And in the interests of the institution, the faculty, the students, the staff, the community at large, I believe it's very important for our university to be able to operate and not to go into a financial whirlwind where all of the efforts that have been accomplished over the last few years will be prejudiced. So I will disappoint you, Dr. Allen, and also Mr. O'Brien, and I hope my colleagues will support me, because, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, at this point, I would like to move to restore or to remove the proposed cut of 616,000 from the University of Guam's budget.
Okay, on the motion, Speaker Pico?
First of all, if I heard correctly, the Chairman of the Committee on Education, who is, you know, the Speaker, he raised the same question to the two of you. And, you know, one thing that was very clear was the fact that you're willing to sort of bite the bullet as part of the overall government, and of course, I do commend you guys for doing that. But I think the situation that we're facing right now throughout the government is that, first of all, the University of Guam is being owed 7.8 million as far as allotment is concerned. There's a different, big difference between allotment and cash release, right? The allotment release, you can release 10 million or, yeah, for the allotment, but the cash you receive is only 7.8, right? And so there's a big difference in terms of the amount here. And so, you know, I know that, you know, here we're going to be going around in circle with all the other departments and agencies of the government of Guam on this, on Chapter Three, the University of Guam, KGTF, as well as the Guam Community College, and this question, I guess, will be raised again, over and over again. And somehow, the figures that we have in front of me sort of come back, you know, it's coming back to what it was when we passed the budget earlier, that projection is 453 now, 453.7. And this is where I'm rather confused in terms of the revenue and also in terms of cash flows. And I think a lot of us here in the legislature sort of felt the same way. And so, we're going to be going around in circle in terms of, you know, the question that will be raised, that motion that will be made, Mr. Chairman, and whether we vote for it or not, you know, you damn if you do, you damn if you don't situation now. And so, I can see where the University of Guam right now is saying, yes, we can, no matter what, you know, we're still, you know, you can hold back the 615,000, 424, 615,424, provided however you release 7.8 million that you owe me. And so, which one do you want? Release of the 7.8 million or to get 615 that you may never get, the way the cash flow is right now? And so, you know, this is just sort of like a general statement I'm making, but it would apply to practically all the other agencies and departments. Well, anyway, Dave, what do you think, in terms of the whole situation scenario that we're facing right now?
Senator, I think you're correct in your assessment. If we don't solve the overall problem, the 616 pales compared to the 7.8 million, that's, I think, where we're coming from. We believe that the university wants to be and can be a part of the solution. If we take everybody out of the solution, if we, if we remove all the appropriations to all of education, public safety, health, you know, the high priority ones, where do we have any money left to obtain the cost containment that needs to take place? So, I just reiterate my point, if you're asking me that, and that is, is I think you need a combination of things. You need cost containment, you need revenue, and you need to look at the cash in the end to make sure that these allotments can be paid. And I'll just reiterate, and I know Harold and I have slight differences on this, so it's not like we're unified in what I'm saying here, but I believe that we can manage to the 616, and we ask you and the administration to find us a way that we can get the 7.8 million as well, and that's a tough ask at this point. I know there's still a lot of work to do to get to that point.
On the motion, Vice Speaker?
Again, thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Again, I want to congratulate the mover, the amendment, and obviously, you know, she believes, she's an educator, and she does believe education is a priority, we all believe education is a priority. Again, a little bit of my concern is, as you've seen how we've moved along and had a bill that was presented to us, the bill that was presented to us had certain assumptions as well, such as an increase in gross receipts tax, obviously, that is not a part of the equation at the present time, and of course, there are other, though there are certain areas there that I do believe that they're very conservative when it comes to collections, there is the issue on tax amnesty that, you know, again, for some of us may feel, they are very bit optimistic. And we must also realize that we are in the first appropriation portion of this bill, and I'm very cautious about eliminating a cut, an appropriation cut, because I'm not too sure what that will lead as we start moving along and we go through section after section. I can't say that, I must commend you folks, because what you're saying now, that you've received seven point, seven point what?
Seven point eight.
Seven point eight million.
We are owed 7.8.
Now, was this on your general fund appropriation for operations?
No, that's overall, Senator. That's a very good question. On the operations, we are owed 5.2, and then on the SFAAP, the Student Financial Aid and the Yamashita Educator Corps, and the specials, we're still owed probably another seven.
See, and that's what I'm saying, we're halfway through the fiscal year, you should have gotten, if allotments and cash were one and the same, and by the way, I find it quite ironic, we don't, we haven't had a BBMR Director here, because in all our discussions over the past several days, when we had the Oversight Hearing, and I found it quite strange when I was going through all the release, the total appropriations, release of allotments, for a lot of the agencies, at least general line agencies, the Director was very confident that the release was made based on the ability for the cash to, there was cash behind it. And again, in several agencies, particular, I think BBMR had about 70 to 80% of their allotment release, of course, I don't know how much cash was released for that particular agency, but tracking it, if they were to continue this trend, if you're still owed 7 million halfway through the year, correct?
Correct.
You should have gotten 12 million by halfway through the year, shouldn't you? I figure if you have an appropriation--
For general operations.
General operations, if it's 24.6 million bucks, then you should be getting 12.3 million, and you're owed 7 point, or 5 point, you said in operations, 5 point--
About 5.2.
If this thing were to continue as it is, you're looking a little bit over 50%, a little bit, little bit over 50% of cash at the end of the year to meet the appropriation. And that's the reason why I want to commend you folks, because you've had halfway through the fiscal year, and you have been, you have been subjected to a major cash flow reduction based on what should have been allotted through you through the appropriation, I mean halfway through the year. The sentiment I have at this point is, if you folks could get, if it's 24 million in operations, 24.6, and you get 24 million, 1,523 dollars by the end of the year, and we're already halfway through the year, because of your major, and you've had to make some major tough decisions, and I'm not here to go over them line by line, but obviously, you had to make the drastic changes because the administration has forced you into a new budget based on their new allotment process, which is tracking as you're going to get 50% of what you, of what was appropriated to you. So, with that in mind, again, I'm taking it your word that with, with the administration coming to us and with them saying that they're going to put a two and a half percent cut, I don't know, is it two and a half percent?
Yes.
Two and a half percent cut on your appropriation, that with that two and a half percent cut, that 600,000 dollar cut in your appropriation, if these folks can give you the remainder of that appropriation before the end of the fiscal, for the end of the fiscal year, you'll be able to stabilize the situation. coming to us, and with them saying that they're going to put a 2.5% cut, I don't know, is it 2.5%?
Yes.
2.5% cut on your appropriation, that with that 2.5% cut, that $600,000 cut in your appropriation, if these folks can give you the remainder of that appropriation before the end of the fiscal, for the end of the fiscal year, you'll be able to stabilize the situation at the University of Guam. Let me ask you, but now, did, has there been in your discussions with the administration, has it been, has there been in your, have you been discussing, who do you, which entity from the governor's office do you discuss your release of?
Primarily with DOA.
Oh, Department of Administration?
But it's a combination usually of BBMR and DOA, Senator.
So which folks were you talking to?
Director Perez, Director Baudelio.
So Mr. Baudelio and Director Perez. Director Perez has been around, I haven't seen Carlos Baudelio in, seems like a long time. So, the, in your discussions with them and the release of your allotment, again, this is a heck of a lot of money that you have not received over the past few months. Do these cash disbursements usually come about, by the way, the reason, I know we're still speaking on the motion by Senator Guthers, but in order for me to make my decision, I want to get very clear on how things occurred and where we're at this point. When you have had these discussions with the administration, is it from the beginning of the fiscal year this problem has occurred and it's just been recurring?
Senator, the problems actually began last fiscal year, if you recall. There's, started this trend, if you will. I think the main thrust of our discussions have been that the university requires consistent and, you know, some advanced knowledge of what our allotment releases are going to be in order to plan and execute our operations. And so, much of the discussions have been around trying to develop a planning number, if you will, looking forward so that we can set our operations in place. I think that unfortunately, because of the deficit situation, unfortunately, because of the cash crunch that's developed, the structural deficit, that, you know, the payments that have come to us have been inconsistent and short.
And that was, I was going to ask you, when you're asking your question to the administration about the release of your allotment and the cash to back it up, have they come to you with, obviously, this cash flow problem? The administration's come to us and, you know, in the past several weeks, and of course, we're now looking at impending, I'm hearing all these issues in regards to April 1st being the deadline and the drop dead date. And you said this is since the beginning of the fiscal year, and even before that. When you've asked for your money and your release, have they advised you how much you could be expected? Has there been, okay, we can get this amount, and we can get this percentage, and we can, and the way we're tracking it this time, it will be at this reduced amount this month, then next month, and the month after?
I think in the beginning, when we first began these discussions, the discussions were quite like that. In other words, you know, we are able to pay you so much, and then we'd look at our own financial situation and try to advise them as to what kind of an allotment payment we could make and still keep the university operations sustained. I think that that's what's happened, and it's happened not just with the university, GCC, GPSS, otherwise, is that as we've progressed to this point in time, I believe it's very difficult for them to give us an answer that they can live with. I mean, I know they'd like to give us more, I know that they plan to give us more, but frequently, they, you know, the cash receipts that they do have, the demands of having to pay GPSS and others, their allotment payments have made the results short of some of the discussions we've had. So, I think we wouldn't have gotten this far if we weren't discussing on a regular basis with them, you know, where the university stands, where their own cash receipts stand, and trying to work it out. But I think that the President would echo me in saying that over time, it's just gotten to the point where we can't plan ahead, and we're not receiving sufficient funds to continue much longer in this kind of mode.
So, there never has been any statement made by BBMR and the administration that we're tracking this certain point, and so, Dave, President Allen, we're going to have to adjust the allotments to a reduced amount, to this amount, and, you know, you can anticipate this for a certain period, and whether this certain period or to the end of the fiscal year?
I think one of the issues that we've discussed with them is how the administration of allotment control actually takes place. Because I think we went through all of last year under the expectation that we would receive most, if not all, of the appropriation that was made by the legislature and signed into public law. I think it was, it was a little late in the game, probably, let's call it November, December, when we understood from them that, you know, they weren't going to be able to pay the full amount of the allotment. Probably on our side, we probably could have woken up a little bit earlier and seen the writing on the wall, but, you know, I think we...
Well, in November, December, did they tell you how much, since they weren't, they were going to tell you that, did they tell you how much it would go down or would be reduced percentage-wise?
They told us it would be difficult for them to pay anything that they owed us at that point in time, which I believe at the time was about 6.4, about 6.4 million or so. That was for '06, yes.
And so, it's November, December, you said, oh my goodness, this ain't gonna, there is gonna be a force. What kind of adjustments did you make?
Well, it was a little late for '06 to make too many adjustments, but it certainly, at that point in time, I believe, if you call it December, when we really saw the decrease in the allotment payments, that we then went into the higher level of austerity control that we went into around mid-December. Well, we had started earlier in September and cut back, as we saw we weren't getting the funds, but by December, we really had to put on quite severe austerity controls. And that was pretty much in reaction to the, you know, the payments that were not being made and to the statements we were now hearing about allotment control for '06 and the difficulties they were having in terms of '07.
I think the other thing I would add is, with the beginning of spring semester, we had access to a bolus of tuition monies. And had it not been for the tuition monies coming in at that point in time, the situation could have become quite severe.
Yeah. Yeah, but again, with those austerity controls, and again, they're firmly in place, right now, again, you've mentioned earlier, that if you were to get everything but that $600,000 with the changes that you've made, understanding the sacrifice and taking, and I understand your, the spirit of sacrifice that you would want to share with this, a little bit of this burden, and with those austerity measures, if you were to get all the cash, less the $600,000, you can make it through the year?
Probably.
Yeah, okay, okay. I'm going to take you at your, at your word on this, and folks, I just want to congratulate you for, again, making the necessary adjustments, especially in light of, you folks seem to be of the ones that have really gotten a major cut when it comes to disperse, cash disbursements to be in line with the actual appropriation. Okay, thank you.
Senator, can I just make a couple of comments? I think the first is, if we can be assured by some process that we will get the remainder of our allotment during FY '07, we certainly can cope with, we will cope with, a loss of $616,000. Far more important than the dollars is knowing what we can plan on. We have to have some kind of a disbursement schedule or will not be able to implement a lot of the goals that we're trying to achieve on behalf of our students.
Obviously, you know, as we go through the other agencies, and I'm, it's, for you, it's different, it transfers out, you know, these are actual cash, it's not, what you get is, I mean, what I see here in the paper is what you got. So, as we move along, and I'm not going to try to make assumptions here, but there are other agencies, particularly in the executive branch, that have got 70, 80, 100% of their allotment. And if they've gotten 70, 80, or 100% of their allotment, and maybe, just maybe, they've also gotten, maybe not 70, 80, or 100, maybe 50, 60, 70% of their allotment, then obviously, BBMR has exercised its allotment authority, but it's set itself certain priorities. So, obviously, a couple of weeks ago, when I did, the last time I saw the director of BBMR, he looked me straight in the eye, and I went through every agency, and that director said, "We have the cash to back it up." And that's quite coincidentally, was before this bill was ever introduced. Anyway, thank you, President Allen.
I would like to also thank Senator Guthers, on behalf of the university community, for her motion.
Senator Blas, on the motion?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. And, yeah, on the motion that was provided by Senator Guthers, again, also just for my, so that I can make a decision, you know, on this motion. And unfortunately, gentlemen, since you're the first ones up on the block, you know, you're going to be asked the first question of the same question that I will be asking of every entity. So, Mary, listen very carefully, because I'm going to ask you when you come up too, and, okay, and then Jackie, you the same, okay? Is, with regards to the cuts that were proposed by the administration, $616,000, if I'm correct, right? What services that the university provides, what are those critical and essential services are going to be impacted? What impact is this cut going to have on those critical and essential services?
Senator, I think on the hiring, the deferred hiring of faculty, that's pretty obvious what happens there. I think we, you know, we just have to go to adjunct professors and things like that to try to make up that difference on the short-term side. I think on the IT side, the impacts are more immediate. I think we definitely have the impact of not being able to go to some web-based student services that I think are sorely needed at the university. I think our distance education efforts have been stymied to some degree. And most importantly, I think that we've put our IT infrastructure at risk. We have some very old servers, we also have additional need for some broadband and some things like that, some virus protection software, some upgrades to software that just to keep us current and to be able to offer the academic courses in the way we need to offer them, and to be able to allow the faculty to do the research that they need to do it. So, some kind of combination of those effects, I think, are the most immediate effects that we'll be seeing.
Okay, but along with these effects, assuming, assuming that things get better down the road, is these some things that we may not be able to afford today, but later on down the road, when we can afford it, we can catch up with it?
I think, Senator, that's a tough question, because I think, you know, when you're making progress, as Senator Guthers says, you hate to see that progress stymied and set back. It's always tough and difficult to pick up momentum again. And I guess what you really hope for is that nothing untoward happens in the interim. So, for example, on the IT side, I think we're fairly exposed, more so than we've ever been before, in terms of some of that lack of that infrastructure that we sorely need. So, I think, yes, possibly, we can catch up, but will we be able to keep the same level and the same, how would you say it, the progress that we've been able to make? I think that'll be, that'll be difficult, and it's probably a better question for the President than me.
I think David's answered it fairly well. My concern, when WASC was here, was being able to demonstrate that the university was taking appropriate steps to meet its capacity requirements for the institutional effectiveness review, which is the next step in accreditation. That occurs in January 2009. If we don't systematically make these critical investments between now and then, and I have to be in California in front of a WASC commission on the 19th of June to explain, following the team's visit in February, exactly what we're doing to demonstrate this capacity in preparing for educational effectiveness, my concern is that we may not be able to make that argument in all areas. We gave them a plan, they accepted the plan, it was contingent upon funding the plan, we've not had the resources available to fund the plan. At this moment, every penny counts.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Senator Pangolino, on the motion?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Dave, you said that you've been shorted about $7.8 million in your allotment release. Have you been operating at a level that spent that 7.8?
No, we haven't, Senator. Obviously, we've had to cut back quite severely. As the President said, we've been able to take at least some of the cash out of the tuition side, the course fee side, you know, things that were intended really for other things, and having to move it to support the general operations of the university. So I think we've been operating at a fairly austere level. I think, you know, if you ask, go around the campus and ask students or faculty or the, you know, the academic deans in particular, you know, how the impact has been on them, I think what you'll see is that we've had to cut backs from many of the basic types of things that we're doing, and basically just live with, you know, a fundamental presentation of the courses and operations.
So, what would that translate to in terms of dollars? Can you quantify that reduced operating level? In other words, if you were to be reimbursed for the allotments not given to you at $7.8 million, what would your cost be of that 7.8 that you've actually operated in, that you've...
Yeah, that's a difficult one. I don't know an exact figure, so it'd be difficult for me to answer, but I can just, you know, point out to you that we've asked people to, in what we're certifying to, on my accountant's level, maybe this will partially answer it, is that we've asked them to certify to only 80% of the appropriated amount, so that's basically where we've been at this point in time. So you'd probably just do 20% and...
But that's not, but that's not meant that you spent at the 80% level either, correct?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Right, so you could be spending at the 70% level, 50% level of that?
Yeah, it's difficult. I couldn't say, Senator, I'd hesitate to guess, but...
Okay. The WASC, the accreditation risk here, I guess, with regards to not getting the resources that you've needed is based upon a plan that you've presented to WASC for the educational effectiveness of the institution and its programs. When we were meeting with WASC, their major concern is that the University of Guam is going to be able to deliver what it promises. What is it that you're not going to be able to deliver, that you have promised to deliver, that, in other words, what has been impacted by this? And could it be that this is an opportunity for the university to restructure also some of its costs and some of its operations, so that we can maybe shift some of the resources from administration to student learning and student teaching?
Well, I don't know so much about the latter, but we're continuing to restructure elements of the campus as we get better at what we're doing. And we explained a lot of that in the capacity review self-study, which was the basis for the team visit in February. I think we've got a couple of major problems. One is our growing dependency on part-time and adjunct instruction, as opposed to building permanent, full-time, tenure-track, critical mass in areas that are increasingly representing student demand. Nursing, four years ago, 175 students, nursing this fall, 420-something. That isn't just nursing, it's organic chemistry labs, it's all of the courses that lead into nursing. We have slowed down purchases that are needed in laboratories, facilities, student learning facilities. We had intended by this time to have a fair amount of instructional technology in place in various classroom activities and a major distance learning program up and running. We've had to delay all of those things in order to simply cope with the cash flow to largely meet payroll and very little else. We have a very substantial vendor reach, as I pointed out earlier, to the point where some companies are now saying, "Pay us cash before we will deal with you ever again." It's hurting us because we don't have any control over where that impact might be. We've also taken cash advances and other things perfectly appropriate from federal funding and the like, but the point is, that's a commitment to be paid back. So, we will do whatever restructuring we're able to do in a significant way as part of our response to WASC, but I can't do very much about the teams having left the campus, believing that we believed the monies would... believing that we believed the monies would be there and that we really would have accomplished these things. So, it's going to be, I think, incumbent upon the university to explain how it's going to retain its focus and how it's going to be prepared for the institutional effectiveness review while not retarding other things. I'm very concerned about our federal projects, grants and contracts that have deliverables that are, in many instances, based on an in-kind contribution of a laboratory or renovated facility or hiring some additional staff. We're down right around thirty full-time faculty right now. If you look at the demand and student flow, nothing else, just look at the current student demand. So, I think all of those things sort of play into the best answer, Senator, that we know how to give you at this particular point. We're vulnerable in some areas and less so in others, but it's, it's a very delicate process through which we're going. We really need to have something done about the seven point eight million dollars.
Dave, has, has the university changed, in order to cope with this, changed its practices with regards to federal programs and cost allocation for overhead? And how, and who gets to access to that cost allocation to fund operations in the administration? Has that?
Let me make sure I understand the specific of your question. So, the question is, is have we changed the way we, we, for example, draw down funds from the federal government or calculate indirect? Is, is that the question?
And who gets that indirect? We, we have you, have you, in other words, you know, where, let's say, the indirect cost of a grant really goes to support the grant writer? And because of your requirement and short-filing cash, it no longer goes to the grant writer, it goes to those general administrative operations of the University of Guam?
We, we, we have a board policy, I, I believe it's a board policy.
Right, have you changed any of that?
No, but I, I think what, what you see happening, Senator, just to kind of answer your question.
Have there been, have there, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, please.
Have, have there been a change in who gets designated as program manager, grant managers?
No, pretty much, that's. No, pretty much, that's defined in the grants. We have to stick with the terms of the grants as, you know, in order to deliver them and deliver the outcomes that we need to. And, and most of the grants, you know, they're not like the block grants that the, the general government gets. They're very specific project-oriented type of grants. And usually those grants, I think the President, he's much better at this than I am, but he can tell you that they lay out who the PI is, very often who the members of the team are. And we pretty much have to stay within that, you know, given whatever is under our control. So, we haven't really used the, the federal side to try to prop up the general operations side. You know, from our standpoint, even when we do the advances that the, that the President's talked about, we've done the, the advances because we haven't been able, as we have in the past, to, to front the money which we then get reimbursed. So, we've done several things. What we've done is shortened the time to reimbursement, so we're constantly trying to churn the, the reimbursed invoices that, that we have. And then, secondly, where allowed, we've been able to go out with some of the federal agencies on some of the grants and be able to do a quick advance in advance of the payroll, so we don't have to advance the local funds. We can basically just take that federal drawdown, pay the federal employee, federally funded employees, and, and go from that standpoint. But if, if your question is, is have we allowed the, the shortages on the general administration side to impact the federal grants? The answer is no directly, but indirectly, of course, they're impacted because the infrastructure that supports those grants, of course, is much less capable and formidable today than it was, you know, six to nine months ago. So, they are feeling the impact, but in, in that indirect sense.
I guess one quick question, Dave, from a, from a more global perspective, as you say, with regards to the overall financial situation that we're facing with the government and why we're looking at these cuts, and given your contribution to the development of this global overall approach to this. You really think six hundred and sixteen thousand dollar cut from the university is going to increase your chance of recovery of seven point eight million?
What, what I truly believe is, is what I said, that it's going to take a combination of cost containment, revenue enhancement, and then a look at the cash, an injection of cash to resolve the problems of the government. I think what we learned in the university is, is that we cannot do enough in terms of the way things have been unfolding ourselves to, to address our own problems. In other words, we can't change enough, we can't cut enough, we can't try to increase our enrollment enough to get out of this situation. We, you know, at, at this point, eighty percent of our general operations are still dependent upon the appropriation and the allotments that go with those appropriations. So, we felt that we had to become engaged in, in the more global sense, as you call it, because the solution was, was with not only ourselves, but the rest of the government of Guam. And we felt that it needed the leadership of not only the governor's office, but the legislature and, and all of the agencies together to kind of pull this together and let's get out of this and then let's move forwards. Because, you know, coming up, let's face it, if, you know, if this economy goes where it's projected to go, we can't be sitting here not investing in our major institutions that go to public health, safety, education. We have to invest today, not just recover to some limp-along kind of a position.
So, do you really think in the global picture, the reduction of six hundred and nineteen thousand dollars is going to have great impact in your recovery of that?
No, Senator.
All right, thank you. And that we need the investment. Thank you.
On the motion, Senator Guthers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Discussion has been very interesting. And, you know, I look at the university, along with GCC and even KGTF, as critical components of our educational program on Guam. I know the President's talked about K through fourteen. There's been some discussion at the university about the K to fourteen model. And I support that model, that we need to look at our young people and their future, not just from the perspective of what happens in our public schools, but also what happens when they go to the community college, they go to the university, and how our public television station also helps to educate them and to transmit knowledge to our young people. I am very reluctant to support a reduction of six hundred and sixteen dollars, uh, six hundred and sixteen thousand dollars to the university's budget. Hearing Mr. O'Brien, hearing the President, of course, if they were to be able to receive what's owed to them, at this point in time, it's about seven million plus, certainly they would be willing to give up six hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. And that would be a good, reasonable and fair action. But we have no guarantee that the administration is going to be able to deliver on that seven million-plus dollars. And I don't think we should take the risk to potentially damage the university. Too much has happened there that has been positive, too much that is done there is critical. It's critical for our economic rearmament, for the future developments that are going to occur on Guam. We don't want students who go to the university, or Guam Community College for that matter, not to hack, have access to that technology that's critical for their education, to support their professional careers after they leave the university so that they can stay on Guam and get good jobs and contribute to our island. We cannot afford to take that chance, Mr. Chairman and colleagues. So, I personally am very adamant and reluctant to support a reduction to the university's budget. And I would suggest to the governor and his team that internally, they could do that on their own. They've been doing it for the last three years. Mr. O'Brien, how much money is owed to the university for fiscal year two thousand and four from your approved budget?
From two thousand and four, I, I don't believe there's anything owed, Senator.
Two thousand and five?
Five hundred thousand.
Two thousand and six?
Two point eight-five million.
And at this point in time, about mid-year through the new fiscal year two thousand and seven, you're owed about seven million plus?
Seven point eight.
Seven point eight million. Is anyone in this room willing to take a chance to further exasperate the financial circumstances of the university by supporting a six hundred and sixteen thousand dollar reduction in their approved budget? I would challenge the administration and the governor to give the university the seven million dollars that owed, that's owed to them and the remainder of their budget. And then, if they wish to hold back six hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, they can do that without a law authorizing them to do that. But I don't think we should be part of any initiative at this point in time to support this proposed cut. And I ask my colleagues to please join me to remove in section one of chapter three the proposed reduction in the University of Guam's budget of six, six hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Guthers. We had closed on the, on the motion, Senator, Mrs. Aki?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Harold, and thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Thank you, Doc. Thanks, GCC and TGIF. Uh-oh, TGIF, sorry, I'm thinking about other things here. No, no, it's, it's tonight, isn't it? But, you, you know, it's, I don't think there's any question that any one of us would totally support all of your missions and endeavors and mandates and giving all the funding you need. And, and I really support Judy. However, I, I think before we adopt it, any, any restoration of the existing numbers, my suggestion is that we go through the whole process for all the departments first. And, and I think we need to prioritize. I mean, each of us are going to have to prioritize what's important between, you know, the, the main priority programs that every government should address, and that's health and education and public safety and, and a few other programs. But, and, and I never want to go against Judy. But, but I, I think, I think that we should be prudent and, and go through the whole process first. And I, I love UOG, I'm a UOG grad, and I support it. And Doc, you know that, that we have a great partnership that go back many years, and, and I, we want to continue that. And, and I don't think anybody, me included, is going to be opposed to giving you all the resources you need. And that's a commitment on my part. But I think we have a responsibility to look at where our true numbers are in terms of revenue, and we need to prioritize. And that's the belt tightening that we all have to do. We have introduced two bills today on reorganization. I think all of us, not, not just the legislature, not, not just the governor, but our whole community, I think we have a responsibility to look at where Guam is today, where, where are we fiscally today? And we need to do everything we can to, to be responsible debtors, to find ways to grow the economy and increase revenue. But, but I think, I think we also need to look at, what do we have to do to tighten the belt and make sure government is as efficient as it can be? And, and so, I'll never want to vote against Dr. J or Dr. J, but I, I like to suggest that we reserve any kind of locking in until we, we're done with looking at all the departments. And, and then I, Mr. O'Brien, I do have a question concerning prior years for '06 when you shorted.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman? We, we made a, a motion at the very beginning to vote section by section.
She's absolutely right, and we had closed in the motion. I just allowed you a little extra time to be able to.
Thank you.
Express your thoughts, but we had already closed in the motion. So, I want to be able to vote in the motion, then be able to move on to the next section.
Okay, well, thank you. At this point, I would have to object to changing the numbers.
Okay, okay.
Clarification, Mr. Chairman? May I ask for a clarification?
Clarification.
My understanding was, in this process on chapter thirteen, that we agreed to go section by section and act section by section. That was my understanding.
That was the understanding, yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, well, no, I, I made my amendment already, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to proceed with it.
There was a motion to delete the section one? No, to, to restore the?
But, but, no, 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 guys.
Speaker Forbes?
Yeah, if I could, I'm sorry, I was out making a phone call, but maybe I'm wrong, because I'm just reacting real quick. But I, I think what we needed to do was amend that to restore the number, because I think a deletion now strikes the entirety of the appropriation out. Could, could we ask the legal counsel that? Because the last thing, or I want someone to come back and say, UOG's appropriation is now zero. I mean, you, you could be very right, Ben, I could be wrong.
I understand that, I, but, no, I, I understand your concern, but if, if I just follow the process, the bill is to amend certain sections of 149, not to delete.
Except it, except it pulls a section out and then changes it. So, I'm worried that, you know what I mean? I'm worried that we got rid of the whole thing in English, so.
I understand, I think it's a legitimate question. I'm, I'm very confident that.
You know, I, I, I hope you're right, so let's.
Just restore to the old law.
Can we stop for thirty seconds and ask the legal counsel?
Three, section one, I move to, oh, we already have the motion. So, Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure that the, the budgeted item for the university will be at the thirty-two million, nine hundred and sixty-three, seven hundred and twenty-two dollar level.
Okay, on the Guthers' motion to go back to the original thirty-two million, nine hundred and sixty-three. We, we had spoken on the motion already, Speaker Forbes. No, we had closed in the motion. We had closed in the motion. Yes. And close. We're calling for the vote, Mr. Speaker. On the motion. Twice. She had closed on the motion. Now, we're standing in the House rules. Ms. Speaker, you're, Ms. Speaker, you're recognized.
All I want to ask. All I want to ask is this, the question I started out with. All right, we, we've taken a long journey to wind up where I was in the beginning. Mr. President, there's a motion on the floor that will restore your budget to the full amount that was originally appropriated by the legislature. I am your oversight chair, I want to support you. I want to give you the tools you think you need to make this thing work. So, I ask you directly, as your oversight chair, how do you want me to vote on this motion? You want me to support it, thank you.
On the Guth, on the Guthers' motion, objections? There was, can we see the rate, the hands, please? All in favor? Motion fails.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Motion, motion fails, Senator Guthers, we had six.
It failed?
It failed.
I can't believe it.
We had six votes. Six votes.
Just move for a reconsideration on the same legislative day.
Thank you, Senator Guthers. On the appropriation, section one appropriation, University of Guam, general comments? That's it, okay. Section, section two, Guam Community College. Send, speak, section, section two, Guam Community College, Ms. Speaker?
Hermie! Mary, how are you doing? Very pleasant, when are you leaving, Hermie? I saw in the paper, I just wanted to hear it from your own mouth. When you going to be Paul?
Can, can we excuse the university?
Oh, certainly, unless they want to comment on everybody else's budget.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Two months and two weeks from now.
Two months and two weeks, you want to be Paul?
Yes. Maybe one more legislative hearing for our budget for '08, maybe.
You want me to have an oversight sometime in that time, just so we can have one last... Hermie and Mary, let me ask the same questions I asked UOG. The change in the appropriation for you guys... Wait, let me find Mantheos. Let me look for Mantheos, or else I cannot see the number. Here we go. Well, it's something grown old, isn't it, Hermie? You look good, though. You really look good. It's changed basically by... Yeah, not that much, really. $182,000. Is that 2.5% too? Is this the pattern here? Does everybody's got 2.5%?
It's about 2, yeah, 2.5%.
So let me ask the same question. If we reduce your appropriation level... Remember, I'm talking appropriation. I'm not talking about cash. I know you've got all kinds of cash issues. So do we. You know, all of us that are not under the direct DOA province have significant cash issues, because we're the ones, I think, who are the last ones to get the check sometimes. That's just the way it works. So, court, everybody. But if we were to reduce your appropriation level by the amount that is suggested here, what direct damage will it do to the programs of GCC, to the students or whatever? Will it have a direct impact if we reduce this appropriation for the balance of the fiscal year?
It will.
It will?
It will. As an example.
Could you specify?
Yes. As an example. If you consider Guam Community College and our mission to provide workforce development and in thinking about what's going to be happening in Guam in the future, when we talk about not only construction trades, but also in the overall economic development as we try to get our young people involved in economic growth, not only are young people, also those who may be disenfranchised in the last couple of years as they come back to Guam Community College to get retooled and retrained, it will impact several programs. At this point, I cannot continue doing what I need to do for the welding program. I've asked Mr. Bolahad to cease and stop what he needs to do to finish up the lab. The AC refrigeration shop that we've moved, I've asked that we cannot continue that until we get enough funds. We can use a masonry lab that I cannot continue with. When we talk about automotive trades, we just recently had a Skills USA contest for our students. In that particular setting, we saw the type of technology necessary for our students to compete and be ready for the workforce. We do not have that specific type of equipment that will allow our students to be able to do well and to be prepared for the new technologies in the automotive trades. In other areas, when we talk about computer science and computer technology, these things, the amount of money you're talking about will have will have an effect there. But more so with construction trades and automotive, in the trades and industry area.
That's all very good. And I agree with you that your general cash flow problems are contributing to that. But I think maybe what I was looking for was just a teeny bit more specificity. We are only talking about a change in the appropriation level of $100 and some thousand. What is it that you will not be able to purchase? What person will you not be able to hire? What specific thing do you think $100 and some thousand represents in terms of a damaging effect? In specific?
There's eight positions at this point that we haven't filled.
Unless they're very cheap positions, $100,000 will not fill eight positions.
There are some that we may be able to fill with that amount of money. Let me give you at least three. We have one in maintenance. We have one in admin services, more specifically to help in financial aid. We have a position also in the business office.
Hermie, will the absence of these positions for the balance of the fiscal year provide any direct damage to students, student services, or anything else?
It may not have... For students, yes. But let me go back to the people within the organization. We now see the strain of having to go through and ask our employees to do double work. And they've gone above and beyond. You can look at the track. You can look at the number of people now who are getting sick in the organization. If we're going to talk about human capital and the care for our employees within the organization, I need to stress that we're finding folks are getting sick more often than not.
Hermie, I understand this. But you're going to have to kind of walk down a slightly different path with me here for a minute. Just like UOG, just like a lot of other outfits that are not directly under DOA, you are now struggling under the burden of insufficient cash releases. I'm asking you to mentally separate that for a moment from the appropriation question I'm asking you. I want you to get all of the cash that gets appropriated to you. I hope you get all the cash that's appropriated to you. I understand, just like in the case of UOG, that to talk about a few hundred thousand dollars in an appropriation is almost silly when the real issue confronting you is that no matter what we appropriate, you ain't getting the cash. You didn't get all the cash last year. You probably didn't get all the cash the year before that. When's the last time, Mary, that GCC, at the end of the fiscal year, had 100% of the cash that was appropriated to it?
'05.
'05? So it's been a while. Couple of years, anyway. So, and how much did you not get in '06?
2.8.
So I understand that. That is a far bigger problem than this. But I am, right now, required, because this is an appropriation measure, to ask you an appropriation question. So, again, we're only talking about $100 and some thousand in cut in this appropriation. And I understand the greater, you know...
The global picture.
I understand. I understand the global picture. But I'm asking you to identify specifically for me how, by the end of this fiscal year, just the loss of $120,000 or whatever it is is going to affect you in a damaging way. So you've got to be able to give me something specific, like, boy, we need that $124,000, because if we don't, we won't be able to do this, or we won't be able to do that, or something.
Damaging, we can probably say none. But however, I understand. Our position is similar to the University of Guam in that we know that what we need to do to help out, and we're willing to do our part.
Okay, then, if that's your first response, then my next question is, as amply demonstrated, although the motion failed, it is within the ability of the body to restore the appropriation, not the cash. We're not talking about cash. But the appropriation here that has been deleted. I asked UOG initially, do you want us to do that? They said, no, it's okay. Later on, they said, okay, Speaker, go ahead and support the motion to restore it. Let me ask you now. If you're saying you're willing to do your part, are you telling me that we don't need to restore this appropriation, that you can handle it?
Taking your position as chairman of the Committee on Education, I ask that you restore it.
You want me...
Yes.
You want the body to restore it? Okay. All right, that's all I need to know. I think what I'll do is I'll let everybody else talk for a while, and then Senator Guthers will jump in there, and she'll make a motion, and then I'll vote yes or something. I don't know. But we'll give everybody else a chance to talk, so we don't kill this right away.
Thank you very much, Speaker Forbes. Senator Guthers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, it's a difficult time for our island. And I am very sympathetic to what the governor's trying to do. And I'm, of course, very cognizant of our challenges. But I know this legislature, and particularly the 28th Guam Legislature, made a commitment to support public education, public safety, and health. Those were defined as the priorities in the fiscal year 2007 budgets that were passed. One budget for education. The other budget, which prioritizes health, public safety, and then all the other services and programs of the government of Guam followed. My approach to this is no different. Education is the priority. Public safety is the priority. Health is the priority. I cannot see us allowing the Guam Community College, just like the university, for that matter, to see any more loss of appropriated funds. Now, can you please tell us, Mr. President and Mary, how much money did you not receive that was authorized for the college in 2005?
We have no outstanding appropriations for 2005.
2006.
2006, we have a balance of which is 25% of our appropriation for fiscal year '06.
So far for fiscal year 2007?
For fiscal year 2007, based on the allotment schedule, we are owed $3,713,866. However, GCC has multiple funding sources, and the general fund is only one component.
Now...
The general fund allotment, we have only received 34% of the $7.3 million appropriation.
You know, Mr. Chairman and colleagues, all of us have observed how the allotments have sort of flowed to the various instrumentalities of the government of Guam over the last few years. And it's well documented, well, well documented, that the Guam Public School System, the University of Guam, and the Guam Community College have not received the monies that they were due and is still not receiving the monies that they are due. Our leaders at the highest level have proclaimed education as their number-one priority, along with public safety and health. And yet, we have a bill here from the governor in the section dealing with the Guam Community College which would reduce their authorized appropriation. Now, even though it may sound like small money, the reality is, for an institution the size of Guam Community College, with its multifaceted missions and responsibilities, this is a lot of money. Frankly, I am amazed that the Guam Community College and the University of Guam have been able to keep their doors open with the inadequate releases they have received over the last two and three years. It really is magical, and I commend the leadership at Guam Community College and the board, and the same with the university and the board there, for being able to keep things going. But, Mr. Chairman, I don't want to be part of any legislative action which would compromise the stated commitment that has been made by the legislature, the 28th Guam Legislature, and this legislature, I would hope, to prioritize education, public safety, and health. Therefore, Mr. Chairman, I am moving to maintain the Guam Community College's authorized budget level the original authorized budgeted amount. And I would hope, Mr. Chairman, that our good governor and his fiscal managers will ensure that the Guam Community College gets all of its authorized funding as a stated priority of the administration. Now, if for some reason they need to hold back a little bit, I would not be disappointed as long as the college got 98% of what's owed to it. We can hold back maybe $182,000. But that should be done without a law. We don't need a law to do this. The governor can hold back, but give the college what it's due. So that is my motion to maintain the Guam Community College's authorized fiscal year 2000 budget at $7,316,562. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Guthers. On the motion by Senator Guthers to restore funding for GCC up to the regular appropriation as adopted in Public Law 28-49... So on the motion by Senator Guthers, did I see a hand? Senator Shimizu was first. This is on the motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Then it was Senator Luhan. I'm sorry, when you raised your hand? On the motion was Senator Luhan, then Senator Shimizu. Senator Luhan on the Senator Judy Guthers' motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, as with the expiring speakers from the University of Guam over there, I do support as well the restoration of the appropriations amount. You know, as the oversight chair for the Department of Labor, let me just say that even the last legislature, the 28th Guam Legislature, and even up to now, we've worked diligently with the Department of Labor folks and Guam Community College. As a matter of fact, I have a group coming in here next month, Mr. Chairman, to work closely with us, Department of Labor, and Guam Community College, to hopefully mirror some of the programs that hopefully we can turn into a sister school down the line. You know, we talked about the need for 15,000 to 20,000 skilled workers in Guam. Alongside with that, we're looking for alternatives. But we've always said, this body had always said, the community always said, that we hire local labor before we go outside of Guam. We know the realities. We know the realities that during the buildup, that we're probably not going to be able to educate 15,000 to 20,000. But we need to get as close to that number as possible. To reduce the number of the appropriations set forth to the Guam Community College will be a big hindrance, Mr. Chairman, on our efforts as a community to prepare our people for work for the incoming, for the upcoming buildup of the military here. Mr. Chairman, as the vice chair of... You being the vice chair of Department of Labor, we're very aggressive in our apprenticeship programs up there, out there. We do almost a monthly roundtable with our community partners. We cannot risk this situation to happen. What scares me, Mr. Chairman, is that if we do not have, we do not build up enough numbers here in regards to our skilled labor force, that the federal government will impose, again, the parole system and go to that rather than us being prepared to be able to get our people to work here in Guam and having the first rights of... Guam, and having the first rights of refusal to, to, to jobs. I cannot, I cannot support any reduction in, in our, our major areas that we, we have deemed important areas, high-important areas. Mr. Speaker, or Mr. Chairman, the only way that this lawmaker will accept any cuts in any agencies, critical agencies, is first and foremost, this governor takes a 50% cut to his budget. This governor must lead by example. He must lead by example. And I'll tell you what, just as in Calvary, when Jesus Christ went up to the mountain, he didn't say, "Slice off the heads of my apostles." He says, "I'll be the one to go for you." He must lead by example, and we must not cut the critical agencies. And therefore, Senator Guthertz, I support your, your motion to restore, most especially for our critical agencies. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Luhan. On the Guthertz Amendment, it was supposed to be Senator Shimizu, then Senator Blas, but I don't see Senator Shimizu, so I'm going to jump to, oh, Senator Shimizu. Then after Senator Blas, Senator Pangolino, then Senator Wampat. Senator Shimizu on the Guthertz Amendment.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Just right at the onset, I, like the University of Guam, I supported my colleague's motion to reinstate, you know, and I've heard earlier that the amount that we're talking about is at a 2.5%, $182,000. But for a small community college like that, it does have a major impact, you know, in terms of training our people with technical skills, the blue collar workers, and, and these are the people that are coming in that need to have that opportunity to, to get new trades and, and in order to, the anticipation of the buildup of our island. And I think this is time that, it's a good investment, and like our good senator who made the motion, is that, you know, the, the management of the appropriation is an executive function, and it all depends on, on, do we walk the talk, you know, in terms of saying that education is important, and it should reflect in terms of priorities to be able to give community colleges. So I just wanted to say that, and I think it's important that we do that, whether they release it or not, we made a policy statement here. We make the policy statement here. We propose it, and the governor will dispose in terms of, as he manages the castle. That's what I wanted to do, and also to say that, Mr. President, you know, I understand that you will be leaving the community college, and so what you're saying here is something that you would like to see, that the, the community college gets fully funded, at least, you know, as, as a farewell gesture, that we really do believe that education is the golden key. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Shimizu, on the Guthertz Amendment. Senator Frank Blas Jr., Senator Blas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Obviously, like I, the question that I had posed to the University of Guam, I will pose as well to the Guam Community College. But before I get to that, also, again, so that I can, I can come to a decision with regards to the motion, one of the concerns, too, that was raised and brought to my attention, apparently there's a payment for a building to the Department of Education, or to, how is that going to be affected by a $182,000 cut in year?
In fiscal year 2006, the US Department of Education requested for a full payment of the money that they had released to the college to build a dormitory. Because the college is not using the building as a dormitory, they requested for full payment. At this time, or at this point, the college has been unable to fulfill that repayment to US DOE. There still remains a balance of $1.8 million, and we do not have the means at the current time to pay that back. We did send documentation or communication to them that we are not able to pay at this time, and we have not received a response from them. The payment was due December 31st, and we have not paid $1.8.
Okay. Along those lines, and I appreciate that, you know, I understand, you know, that those concerns there, but just to be consistent as well, you know, the question that I had asked the university, again, like I said, I'm going to ask everybody that comes up here. So, you know, with a loss of about $182,000, notwithstanding the payments that you've got to make to US DOE for the, for the building, what are the, what are the critical and essential services that you provide to the people of Guam that are going to be impacted by, by the cut?
Senator, I'll give the same response I gave to Speaker Forbes. In terms of programs, if we're considered the lead agency for workforce development, and in looking at what's possible the future for our people, in being involved with economic upturn for this island, we have areas in construction trades that needs to be revamped and re-set. One specific area is in air conditioning refrigeration. We've had to move our lab from one building to the next. But even with that move, our equipment is outdated. We need to find a teacher for that program, although it's not, it's not this, this cycle, but I'd like to be able to, be able to get ready with equipment for that area. Our masonry, right now, is being offered on a slab outside that's a small part of, of the, the construction trades area. Our, although it's only, you can say $182,000, $182,000 could mean a lot, when you're talking about wanting to upgrade students in our, not only those areas, but also in automotive. If you look at the new equipment that the folks came in during the contest two or three weekends ago, that $182,000 can furnish at least five to six high-tech scanners and computers that are necessary to interface with the new cars today. The days where you, you think you're dealing with technicians that are shade tree mechanics are gone. The advances in technology that you'll find that sits on the desktop, on your desktop, as you look at your computer, is the same kind of technology that you'll find in today's cars. The kind of computers that they, they now use, what was interesting is, every single automotive agency that came out to help us with this particular contest, they had Panasonic Toughbooks. A Panasonic Toughbook is about six grand. Now, if you include, if you include the other peripherals you'll need to make that particular Toughbook a scanner to be able to, to, to detect the various faults within a given system for a car, then you're talking about an investment of about 20 grand for that particular system. And that's just for automotive technology. So certainly, $100,000 may seem small if you look at the, at the overall amount, but it does mean something to us.
Yeah, and please, don't, by no means, it's, I understand, $180,000 is a lot of money, especially for, you're looking at the budget that you, that you've got here from the general fund, and...thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. Senator Ben Pangolino on the Guthertz Amendment?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I just wanted to briefly express my support for the, the amendment. I think that the Guam Community College, especially under the leadership of Dr. Hermie there, has really been able to do a lot with a lot less. And I think that, that ability to manage the resources and maximize them, to ensure that the services for the students are not curtailed, is, is to be commended and rewarded rather than punished. And I don't want to say that the cuts here are being punished to bad agencies, but we certainly know that an investment of $182,000 into the Guam Community College versus an investment into any of the other operating cost centers of our government, the return on our investment here will be greater in terms of maximizing opportunities for our people. And I think that's really, for me, the key of why I support this, not only because it will do that, but it's a place where we can put our money, we're going to get, where we're going to get the best return for our people, and, and I support the, the amendment and the work that the Guam Community College has done in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Pangolino. Senator Wampat?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I too would like to show my support for Senator Guthertz's amendment, and like the previous speaker basically said, we've always known GCC to be very, I mean, to be able to toe the line every time there are some cuts in the government, and they have actually shown that they're able to manage their funds very well, and they've actually would be the model agency or department for the rest of, of the department agencies. And, and I think that this is probably the worst time, regardless, I realize that 182,000 may not, I mean, to us, when we've been only dealing with millions of dollars, I mean, that this may be a, a small amount, but it's definitely a large amount, and it's just like a drop in the bucket, especially when we're talking about the, the pending, you know, influx of military here. And we, this is the time when we really need to support GCC to prepare, not to prepare only the youth, but to prepare other individuals that need to be retrained, to be placed in, in the, in the trades, the construction trades, because we want our people to have the first rights of refusal in order to, you know, to, to get the jobs before we start giving it to anyone else. And, and I heard the president's passion about how it would affect or impact GCC in terms of the workforce, and that there are several laboratories, especially in the trades or in the industry area, that would be impacted the most. And, and so, Mr. Chairman and my colleagues, I ask that we really seriously consider supporting GCC. Unfortunately, we weren't able to do that with UOG, but the agency, I know, that would definitely assist in, in the economic growth of the island, which is through the products of the GCC, will definitely go a long way. So I, I, the little of us who are here, I ask that, that there really won't be any objection to, to this amendment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Wampat. Vice Speaker Calvo?
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, again, as one of the individuals that, that passed the Guam Apprenticeship Program Act, and is so bullish about the future potential for our workforce, again, that is the future. The, the problem we have now in Guam is trying to find the, the manpower that will, manpower, I should say, manpower and woman power, in order to deal with the, with the growth that is anticipated, with the movement of the Marines, as well as...